Mr. King, you take care of the invocation, please.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Lordy, you take care of the pledge.
Uh huh.
Discussions or adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, wanted to, if I could, to add a presentation this morning by Milford Smith and Kent Warren from Jackson Builders on the Steel Memorial Library. Uh, he's got a short, some pictures he wants to show us. And, uh, George and I decided, and had talked about that, let's do that in relation to going to take the tour this afternoon.
Oh, we need to add that in, uh, new business or...
I would do it just before the tour. I think the idea was, we weren't sure if everybody could make the tour. And so, on the chance that somebody might not, they would at least hear this update.
What do you want to insert? What do you, what do you think, under a new business or what could do? Right before we go?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, alright.
Yeah. I didn't get a doggone agenda.
Anyone else got any adjustments to need, need to discuss?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
They have other...
We have, we have, that's true. We have a closed session.
Yes, we do. We do have a closed session, double Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Uh, nine fifteen, we have a public hearing on the, uh, get input from the public if there is any public comments on the consolidation of New Hope, East Wayne Fire Service District and Eureka and Pharaoh Fire Service District. And I understand that all four of those agencies, uh, that will soon be two agencies, will have representatives here. And when we get through, uh, the public, uh, comment section, if there is no opposition, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, move forward with those consolidations. Any discussion on that? Okay. Unfinished business? Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. Nothing under consent agenda. New business, cardiac arrest management protocol presentation. Uh, Dr. Grant from the hospital and Andrew Caro, our EMS director, will handle that. I think Joe Gurley will also be here with him, I think, but Dr. Grant and Andrew will be doing the presentation. Young Family Connection Program presentation.
Mr. Madden will be here.
Okay. Motion to approve National County Government Month Proclamation. Uh, Mr. Mayor said he would read that resolution. Uh, motion to approve Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. Mr. Pate said he would read that proclamation. Ms. Hope, your budget amendments? You only have just a couple today, you just two. Okay. Uh, ten o'clock, public comment section. Then we will, we will need to go into closed session. Uh, do we want to go in closed session now or do we want to wait?
I think it'd be better now, we could save some time.
Okay. Okay, which as soon as we get through here, we'll go into closed session. And we'll have the county, county managers, uh, comments and reports. And county commissioners, committee reports and comments. Then we'll have, uh, Milford and the representative from Jackson Builders on, uh, Steel Memorial Library. And after that, if we have no other business, we'll leave and go tour the Steel Memorial Library in Mount Olive. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed session.
I have a motion on floor, we go into closed session. That's for the purpose of discussing the location of or expansion of industries or businesses in Wayne County and to consult them and turn to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Okay. We have a motion that we go into closed session, on favor. Motion carries, we'll go into closed session. A little past nine o'clock, time to conduct the business of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Uh, ask if anyone has their phones or pagers on the, uh, or to put them on the silent mode, please. It won't interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Uh, invocation, uh, Mr. King?
Sir.
Would you bow with me?
Lord, you tell us in your word that we are to come before you boldly and confidence that you do listen. And you listen because you love us, you're a father. We thank you for this day, for all the blessings that you've bestowed on us. You've told us in your word also, Lord, that you're everywhere, you're omnipresent, you're all-knowing, you're all-powerful. And with that, and knowing that we can come to you in a time of need, there are those in our community and, and those in our state and our nation that are hurting, there are those in the world that are hurting. And we'll lift those up to you, those people that are in destitute, who are less fortunate than others, that struggle financially, spiritually, physically, mentally. We lift those up to you this morning. We're grateful that in this county of Wayne, that we have great leaders in our municipalities. We're grateful that we have good stewards of what they have been given to, to task for serving others. We're thankful for our employees in our county that, uh, though they're in, with issues daily in their families, they, they come to work and they work hard to provide the service, to protect, uh, the citizens in this county. Those whether they be in, in health, uh, whether they be in fire service, police service, those, um, that go out and guard our homes at night within the Sheriff's Department, that are giving us the peace, that, providing us that safety. We're just grateful that, um, that you watch over us. So this day, and as you live within us, give us the direction through the power of the Holy Spirit, that we will do and say everything and be everything that glorifies you in Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Glory to man and pleasure allegiance. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Discussion of the agenda, uh, any amendment to the, uh, agenda? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we had, we had added, um, before the tour, the Steel Memorial Library facility, we had added the presentation from, um, Milford Smith, our facility director, and I understand, uh, Kent Warren is here from Jackson Builders to give us a, a report on the Steel Memorial Library before our tour, uh, today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It ain't all about two minutes before it's nine fifteen for our public hearing. We do not have anything on the consent agenda this morning, so we'll, uh, pass over it. And I don't know of anything on unfinished business, so, uh, does Mr. Parker, Mr. Wood has anything?
Really at a point now...
My computer says nine fifteen.
Your computer says nine fifteen?
It's off.
Okay. It's nine fifteen, we have a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed consolidation of New Hope and East Wayne Fire Service Districts into New Hope Fire Service District and Eureka and Pharaoh Fire Service Districts into Northeast Wayne Fire Service District. Uh, the public comment section is now open. If anyone has any public comments that they need, would like to make on this, uh, issue, please come forward now.
My name's Ralph Legrand, I live at 216 Lancaster Point Drive in Pikeville, North Carolina. Phone number's nine one nine seven seven eight zero three one zero. Um, when, about a month ago or so, whenever I received the letter, um, you know, like a lot of stuff should get in the mail, I sat it to the side. But, um, my wife asked me a few weeks ago about it again, she says, "Do you need this?" And I said, "Well, let me look at it again." Well, I looked at it and I saw the proposed district change. And I didn't only take the Sawston, New Hope into consideration, but I also looked at the Pharaoh, Eureka. Uh, those are beside East Wayne. Sawston and Pharaoh are the two closest fire departments to my house. Um, so, at that time, I, I'm the president also of our, um, housing authority in our neighborhood, and I called the people together. And, uh, what I did before we called together, um, I did a little survey on myself, I did a little investigate myself, um, non-scientific or anything like that, I just, what I did is I drove both fire departments from my house to each fire department, Sawston and New Hope. And what I did, which I'd like to ask y'all, y'all don't have to answer, I don't know where y'all come up with that, I don't know if any of you gentlemen up here or anybody with the county drove it also and did your own research or how y'all came to the consideration of adding my neighborhood, Truvine Road, with, um, New Hope. But what I did is I drove from Sawston Fire Department to my house. And Sawston Fire Department to my house is three point two five miles, three and a quarter miles. It takes me approximately four and a half minutes, four to four and a half minutes, depending on traffic on 13th, to get to my house. Leaving Sawston, either way you go out of the fire department, to the left or to the right, there's one turn, either right on Wayne Memorial, left on US 13th. I drove it in the morning, I drove it in the middle of the day, and I drove it in the afternoon. I encountered one school bus in the afternoon. It approximately changed the time about thirty seconds. I did the same thing with New Hope Fire Department. New Hope Fire Department is six miles from my house. And I live on the end of Truvine Road closest to New Hope. I also did the same experience three times. And there's actually two different ways that you can get from New Hope to my house. It changed, it, driving time on a normal day is eight minutes to my house, the short way. The other way is eight minutes forty-five seconds. That doesn't sound like a whole lot of time, but if one of your houses are on fire, that's a lot of time. Um, and the thing that I noticed is, New Hope is really close to Eastern Wayne High School and Eastern Wayne Elementary. On a normal day, it's eight minutes. I encountered about approximately four school buses one afternoon getting to my house from New Hope. It changed the distance time by ten minutes. So now we've gone from eight and a half to eight minutes forty-five seconds, up to close to twenty minutes. Close to twenty minutes. Um, also asked, um, someone at the store with Sawston Fire Department, I said, "How do you know off the top of your hand, how many people, firemen, do you have any living on Truvine Road?" He said, "Yes, we got five firemen." And I know personally three or four that live within, less than a quarter of a mile from Truvine Road from where they live at. So we have approximately eight firemen that live very close to Truvine Road. I also asked them, I said, "Well, where's your district at right now?" They said, "We got everything on Wayne Memorial, to, to Truvine, and everything on Highway 13 to Truvine." But they, everything in between it doesn't, you know, that's not theirs. Also, I saw one of the New Hope firemen at a gas station one day, and I asked the same question. It was a younger guy, and I asked, I said, "How many firemen y'all got close to there?" And his answer to me was, "That's personal information." I said, "Okay, not a problem, just asking, don't want to know their address, I was just wondering, curious how many were close." So, after that, I also took into consideration, what are they going to do with East Wayne Fire District? Or Fire Department, I'm sorry. Are they going to just dissolve it? Will they add somebody there? Which, my, I started thinking in my mind, well, if they add a fire truck there or make that into a fire station, I don't know, I'm just, you know, I just look at everything in consideration. Wouldn't it make sense to have eight firemen living less, on a call of less than two minutes, in some cases, less than a minute, to respond to that fire station to get a fire truck? This, I hope, um, as Mr. King said in his prayer, um, we're all here to be good stewards, you as commissioners, we as, um, business owners. And as a good steward, I hope y'all take into consideration that, um, this could really dramatically affect response times to our homes. Truvine Road has a lot of houses on, I would say it's got approximately two hundred homes in the neighborhoods that are there. Uh, it just makes sense to me that if Sawston's already got everything on the right side of Truvine Road and left side of Truvine Road, just go ahead and get them Truvine Road. Because it doesn't make much sense if they're responding from New Hope to go through Sawston's Fire District to get to their, their Fire District again. Also, on a fire call, if it's in my neighborhood and New Hope's the Fire Department, they'll be toned out first, followed by mutual aid, which is probably going to be, in all likelihood, Sawston. If they tone them out, Sawston's going to get there first. And it just makes sense to me that whoever's closest with the fastest response time should be the one, should be their Fire District. Um, but if there's, if y'all have any questions for me, you know?
Anyone have a question? I don't really have a question, but I'll comment. If they want to keep in mind, this consolidation is all being completely volunteer, not forcing anyone. Any consolidation?
It's all strictly volunteer. Uh, I don't know what the agreement was between New Hope Fire Department and East Wayne. That was their personal, uh, decision. It has been talked for several years on some consolidation in the county, and it was very refreshing to me, uh, having over fifty years in the fire service, very refreshing to me, that they took the incentive to move forward, uh, and put the citizens and the residents in their fire service districts, uh, above their personal feelings. And I commend them on making the effort or going through the effort of consolidating. And if anyone else has any comments or questions, feel free to make them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was Sawston ever approached about taking on that district?
Sir, I was not in the negotiation between East Wayne and New Hope, and like I say, that was strictly volunteer. I'm quite sure that, uh, East Wayne probably was the driving force in it. Their choice was to go with New Hope. Or as me being in any of the meetings personally, I have not. It was strictly a decision that I would say more tilted in the direction of East Wayne more than it did New Hope. But I think, and, and someone, OES can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the station at East Wayne will still be in service. Even though they're consolidating, uh, into one department, uh, they will still maintain two stations, they will still have equipment in the East Wayne Station, uh, and, uh, still have manpower at that station.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because that's, that was my next point. You know, I, I'm just, I just have always, um, whether running a business or in my personal life, um, have always planned for the worst. And anything worse, or less than worse is good. And one of my things that I was thinking of is how big New Hope Fire District is now. If they were to be toned out at Bestin Road and New Hope, because that is their Fire District out there, uh, more than likely, whether they got manpower at East Wayne or New Hope, they're all going to respond to, whether it's an accident, fire call, whatever. But if there were to be an accident or fire call back over to our end of the woods, that is probably a good twenty to twenty, approximately twenty minute drive back through there, through the country. So, uh, that, that was another concern we had.
And we do also have in place, uh, our mutual aid agreements in Wayne County. On some calls, at some point, if, uh, among used, uh, different departments than, than what's in discussion right now, say, uh, I just use for example, say Marmak has a, a call, uh, any structural fire, you automatically dispatch three departments. Uh, and on any given day, uh, Arrington or Dudley may actually get to that call first. And that's the objective, is to, it doesn't make any difference whether it's a red fire truck or a black fire truck or a yellow fire truck. The main, the objective is to get someone there in a hurry.
And I understand that completely, and you're correct. If my house on fire, I don't care if it comes up painted with polka dots, um, as long as I can get the fire out. But it just, well, you got that many firemen living that close to a section in there, whether East Wayne proposed to go to New Hope, whether it was even brought up to Sawston, that would, to me, would be a really good thing to dig into and find out. Um, it just makes good, sorry, it makes good sense to do what's right for the citizens. And I just ask that, if y'all would take that into consideration, letting Sawston, um, take into consideration, let them go ahead and fill in that on Truvine Road, since they've already got firemen there, since the firemen already know the, um, the layout of Truvine Road, homes, roads, and, um, what have you.
Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Mayor?
I would, uh, if, unless someone is already here from, from the fire services that can answer his question, I would recommend that, uh, someone from the fire service get his name and phone number and actually call him and get back with him, because obviously we're, you know, that's commissioner, we weren't involved in the negotiations. So I would suggest that if no one here today from fire services is prepared to answer your question, that they, they take your name and phone number and just get back with you and, and, um, let the fire service answer your question. Oh, okay. We do have representatives here from OES, and we also have representatives here from East Wayne and New Hope. And this is the public comment section. Uh, if, if you've made all your comments, uh, I would certainly feel free, feel free for anyone from East Wayne Fire Department and New Hope, uh, to please come forward and, and, uh, express your, uh, opinion and your, uh, possibly your reasons for, uh, going the route that y'all went. Like I say, the county has not been involved in this, other than just helping with the paperwork and all that. Thank you for your comments.
Certainly. Good morning.
I'm Lil Sol, Chief East Wayne Fire Department. I've been in fire service forty-nine plus years. I've been chief of East Wayne for, since nineteen seventy-five. We at East Wayne have been looking at this merger for five years. We knew it's, it's time come, as things move forward, we need to combine and make a lot of fire service for our community. We are nine S rating right now. When we can merge with New Hope, we'll be a five. And we also have more firefighters in the district. Right, I answered his question with us, East Wayne will remain, that was part of the merger, East Wayne would not be closed. We will, we are one mile, about less than a mile and a half from Laxton Port. Our response time is tremendous. He said it has firemen on, uh, Truvine Road, which is fine, but the firemen is no good if you don't have a fire truck there. We can beat our quit. And we obviously, we have showed that in the past, in all our years we've been in fire fighting business. So we're, we're there to help the community. We, we, I approached Donald, Chief of New Hope back last year. I told, we were interested in merging for the, uh, community for better fire service. The road is going through through Houswamp, cutting them off. They need a station on this side for better retention in the Houswamp area. And we fit the bill. We will save the county a tremendous amount of money, they don't have to go out and build another fire station, we're already there. We got, we got a station, we went forty-five years, gentlemen, did not have running water or a vacuum. We had just got that completed just a few years ago. We're very proud to have that. Our main concern with fire protection, to have a Class A engine and a tanker that would respond to the fire call, that was our agenda. We didn't care how new it was, how shiny it was, as long as it would do the job. I want to thank the board of Wayne County for helping us out in the year two thousand. We were able to purchase a two thousand GMC, uh, Engine One, to, for our fire protection, with the help of the county, the longest money to help us do that. And I'm proud to say, as of this, of this year, we have paid about that alone in full to the county. I want to thank you, gentlemen, and the county, former county commissioners, for doing that for us. That, we, we appreciate that. Right now, at East Wayne, our goal, we said four, four years ago, our goal was to have our fire station in district be debt-free. When we merged, we wouldn't be a burden on another fire department. Right now, East Wayne Fire Department is debt-free. We don't owe anybody anything. And that's because we're looking for the future. We're looking forward to good with New Hope. And then the survey, we, I talked with them in the survey, and their recommendation was to merge with New Hope. We had done, made that decision four, five years ago, if we merged, New Hope would be the one. And over close to our district, New Hope has ten firemen over on, close to Road Valley Road, right around this, that can respond to our station. We still have our fire department, we still have members right in the station there, right across from the station down the road, that can respond. Me and my sister chief, Daryl Smith, we're retired, we're available twenty-four seven. We most time in daytime, if you ain't fast, we'll beat you there. Uh, we can respond fast. Uh, we don't have anything to hold us back. So we, we've been dedicated, so, our main concern for East Wayne was merge for the better community. We, we consider it the community on Truvine Road. Truvine Road is where we get our money from, but we had no money. Money was the issue. We had farmland, had new houses. And to the subdivision come on Truvine Road, that's how we started accumulating some money. We didn't have nothing, buy nothing, we'd go forward. Now, we have a little money that we can help. Merge with New Hope, we'll be a better department, they got firefighters, we got firefighters. And like I tell you, we are one less than a mile and a half to Laxton Port. We can beat them in just a few minutes. So we ain't calling for New Hope to get to Laxton Port. There'll be a set of trucks, yes, but we'll respond in manpower from East Wayne Fire Department to Laxton Port and Truvine Road. We're closer than all of them together. There's no way, if we were all sitting in the station, standing, turning out at the same time, there's no way they can beat us. Ain't no way they can do it. That's, that's be running speed, I ain't seen a fly, I said, running speed lately. So I'm very proud to be for East Wayne. But we have struggled over the years, but we have maintained, the Lord has helped, we have maintained our department. I've been in the meeting with my uncle, my daddy, when they found that fire department. When we had meetings, we didn't sit down and make the sketch, how much money we had, we want to buy new trucks. They took, pulled them out of their pocketbooks and put on the tables, said this to pay the light bill to keep us going financially, cover our own pockets. So we're, my father and my uncles and cousins, they founded that fire department. And we're not, we do not, I'm not here to release any part of East Wayne District. If I got to give... If I got to give up my district, the merger, I will call the merge off. Oh, that's East Wayne district, we didn't go into it for fight over districts. That merger, that district is East Wayne. We've been there all these years, fifty-plus years. We were merging to better fire this district, to be able to supply the needs of the growing concern. So that's the way I stand it. We're here to help, here to call no confusion. But there's nobody from East Wayne that can beat East Wayne, New Hope or Sauson can beat us there. Now, we can buy with New Hope, in name only, it's in name. But we're merging our resources together. And everybody resists change. I worked two companies, thirty-six years. You can make some change and everybody went hysterical. Because they said, I can't, well, this ain't gonna work, this ain't gonna work. But I had to try it. This is the best thing we ever done. So I know how this is, and I understand his point. But he didn't measure from East Wayne to Laxton Point, a mile and a half. I believe, I believe we can beat everybody there. Of time, our history has proved that. But we want to go forward. We've been meeting with New Hope, we've been training them. They got a truck, they want to pit over there at our station. There's an engine, it's fully equipped, all the equipment it's got on it, for a district fire rating. And we done taken over, it fit in the station. We could have two Class A engines, ready to respond on a moment's notice. Just like on the East Wayne Road. My children stay on the East Wayne Road. It would be a shame to say we close East Wayne and come all the way from Sauson, where I can pull the hoods out the front door and pit it out. So East Wayne is gonna be there. Because that's where the purpose, I told them, with New Hope. I said, my main concern, I want New Hope, the East Wayne station to be there. No, I put too much hard work in, see, I ain't have to, but building the community. East Wayne will be there, we're gonna protect our citizens. Our citizens come first, we want to be in the best protection we can. So as you say, I approach, merge with East Wayne, with New Hope. I approached New Hope, New Hope did approach me, I approached them. But the recommendation from the survey was to go with New Hope. But we had already made that decision when the survey came. That just kind of put a little gas on the fire, said, well, we need to go ahead and do something. That's what we done. Have your questions, Ford.
Any questions?
Mr. Baker.
Since both are, all this is in my district, and I support and applaud each one of you guys. I really do. And I thank you for what you do. And this does keep the lines exactly the way they were really previously. And so you guys are speaking, I know we got some folks in Sauson in here too. I'd kind of like to hear their opinion. I was not part of the negotiation, and I really don't understand why this is, you know, in contention. I really don't know.
Like I said, the money we get is coming off of Truvine Road. That's where I booked our money coming from, because we didn't have the money. Because on the other side, we got some farmland, got a few houses, not much. But I booked our money coming from Truvine Road. So when we, when we started, we didn't have to worry about the money part. That's when we started getting a little money. And we were able to pay off our debt to the county because of that. So if we lost that, we would, we would go, I thought we'd be almost ended. Before I do that, I've spent too much time in our community, we've been two together. I wouldn't, we won't merge if we can't keep our district. That was the whole point, to keep East Wayne district, to help it. So that's, that's the way I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Salz.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else have any comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rick Tharnton. I live at one oh four Natural Drive, Pikeville, North Carolina. My phone number's nine one nine seven seven eight eight one zero six. And I have a copy of my comments. I like to place in record in case I get excited and miss something. I lived in the Sauson community since nineteen ninety-one, and have been a member of Sauson Volunteer Fire Department since June of nineteen ninety-three. During that time, I've helped various positions in the fire department. The volunteer fire service has changed over years. Some changes have been for the better, some not for the better. One thing is remain constant, that is to help the mutually fire departments to help each other when the time is needed. Knowing that other fire departments on the way helps a fire command officer make decision that saves lives and reduces property damage. Firefighters have to know that someone has their back. And that gives them the confidence knowing they will return home. Service to our community and fellow man is a calling that firefighters hold dear. However, a fire department has to be run like a business. Most fire departments are corporations with fire commissioners, board of directors, administrative officers, and line officers. Each one has a duty that they perform correctly, or the fire department fails in its mission. Each fire department must look towards the future. The future of fire service in Wayne County hinges on shaping fire districts based on sound firefighting principles. That is why I'm here today. I am not in favor of consolidating the fire districts as proposed today. The lines are based on friendships and not on sound response time. The lines on Truvine are example. Each inner road is a Sauson Fire District with the mental position proposed to be in New Hope's district. They would have to drive through one district to get another. That's not sound principle. The first map that was posed to our fire chief reduced the Sauson Fire District and gave additional land to New Hope Fire Department. It almost included my own house. Currently, we have firemen living on Truvine Road. We feel that the service district for Sauson Volunteer Fire Department should include property between and touching US thirteen north and Wayne Moore Drive to the Green County line. That will provide the best response time and allow all responders to travel on many thoroughfares. Thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, by the way, I'm chairman of the board of Sauson Fire Department.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Tharnton.
What questions? Is there any chance of any further negotiation that could be worked out? Because I'd hate to see the mergers fall through, because I know parts of the county, like in Fay Road, is gonna save taxpayers a lot of money. And so this may as well too.
Chances of any thorough negotiation? Quite frankly, Sauson was not in the negotiation. And we'll be open to those any comments of the negotiation.
Well, you know, this all follows back to, the key word was, this was all volunteer on those two departments. That's the key. And I'm assuming, and I probably shouldn't assume, but I'm assuming that East Wayne chose New Hope for a reason. And nothing against Sauson. But like I say, I was not in the negotiation. And this had been talked about for years. And the fact that those fire departments chose to consolidate, we felt like, or I felt like, it would make it a whole lot easier for the county than trying to start redrawing lines. But it was basically East Wayne's decision on what route they wanted to go. And that's one reason that the county has not got out and pushed the issue on trying to change the lines.
As the governing body, responsible to their citizens for their service and fire protection, I don't think you can stand idly by and let this happen.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tharnton. Let me ask, I'll show my ignorance. Could I ask the counsel here? These lines that are drawn up are boundaries that are established legally to define where those boundaries are in each one of our fire districts. Is that correct?
Service district.
Service district. So that service district has already been predefined by legal descriptions?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct? And if I'm understanding correctly, what we're doing is taking two of those that are in fact already predefined and merging them together. We're not changing the boundary lines between those two departments, our service areas.
That's correct. That's what's before you to, that's what the public hearing is about.
In changing those lines, that would have to be action from those departments in discussing with other departments. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. Can the county cannot just go out and change the lines, can it? Doesn't it have to go through the Department of Insurance? Is that all your questions, Rick? Please, Brian.
There's, it gets a little confusing. Fire service districts, what we're looking at today is the tax area. That's the reason for the public hearing, that's the reason for all that. You've got to meet certain guidelines to be able to consolidate those districts, which this meets what's being presented to you. The fire protection districts is insurance district. That's what has to be approved by the Department of Insurance. Fire service districts, they don't really have anything to do with. We can make the fire service districts whatever we want. That's the tax area. But years ago, we used to have, I'll give you a little history, kind of addressed one of Mr. Tharnton's thoughts. Back in the seventies, fire districts were done by point to point. Might have been from this intersection to another intersection. Back in two thousand eleven, we brought before the commissioners because we found a lot of areas in the county where we had overlaps, we had areas that weren't protected. So there were some folks that were not getting any kind of insurance breaks on their homeowner. So when we done that, the instructions that I received at that time from the place then were to follow the districts as they were as closely as possible. And we went by property lines. And with that, there were some minor adjustments here and there, which is exactly what we did, and that's what's represented today, is by those property lines. The merging of these two fire service districts today at the request of New Hope and Sauson and Fay Road and Eureka was taking those districts as they are today and putting them together with no changes. And this has, this is strictly dealing with tax here. The fire protection districts were approved last week by the commission, which represented the exact same thing, the two fire protection districts joining together. And at the request of the fire department, instead of consolidating, that's what I did, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. You're consolidating the service districts, but does that also include the finances? Are they still independent? The taxes, so to speak?
Fire service district is your tax district. And that is the area that they respond to. Years ago, we had, we had fire departments responding to areas that they weren't receiving any tax monies from.
Right.
So that was the creation of the fire service districts back in two thousand eleven. I think it was two thousand eleven that we finally created those.
So for example, Eureka and Fay Road, Eureka was still, get their tax from the county based on their population? That still be were separate issue, not gonna combine the taxes that are collected? Is that right?
What you'll have, like in Eureka and Fay Road, you got these two separate districts today. If you approve this, then they become one district. And that whole district will be taxed for the northeast fire protection district, for fire protection.
Okay, thank you. So really, when you get down to it, the district, the districts that used to be individually is really immaterial. You can take that as a whole district, and if you, if you feel like that the district lines need to be changed, you can do that. Is that right?
Yes. County commissioners can change the fire protection districts at any point in time. The fire service districts mimic the fire protection districts. So whatever they respond to, they get the tax for that. We're used to, they did.
Good, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the fire marshal?
I have one. Mr. Wood. I just want to clarify that when you do your computer aided dispatch, the determination of which three departments to page out on a structure fire, that's based on closest to the fire, is that correct?
That's based on recommendation, recommendations from the fire department.
Okay.
Fire department makes those recommendations, and that's what we do for them.
Any other questions? Anyone else have any comments?
Good morning, Mistress. Chairman.
Good morning.
My name is Alvin Lawrence. I'm with New Hope Fire Department. I am, I've been with them since nineteen eighty-five. Presently, I'm a captain with them, and I am serving as the board chairman for that department. We were presented, the county was presented with a survey several months ago, almost years now. In that survey, Mr. Limon Salz brought up that one of the recommendations was that New Hope Fire Department and East Wayne Fire Department would merge. We didn't move on it right away because it was rather new to us. But as time would have it, and as resources began to present themselves, Mr. Salz, he approached our chief, Mr. Gray, Donald Gray. And they brought about a thought process of merging. As it was stated by Mr. Salz, Chief Salz, many years ago, this was a thought process and a discussion as far as joining those two departments. It seemed to make sense, more so now with the new bypass that is coming through our district. It is, it is kind of severing us from, from one side of our present district. And we were toying with the idea of trying to find a substation on that side of our district. East Wayne serves that purpose perfectly. It gives us coverage for our northern side of our district. And what it would do is, all we're doing is, we are not taking anything away from East Wayne. I want to make that abundantly clear. All that we are doing here is we are shoring up an already rather firm foundation that they've created over the past many years. We're gonna try to add our resources that we have and try to build them backup to what I think that they can be, or what we think that they can be. They have fourteen firefighters that are going to join the merge, that are going to join our organization, our new organization. The fire department is still going to respond as it has in the past. There has, the changes of district lines, Brian, there has been no change. Is that correct? Okay, so I just wanted to clarify. If there was, I didn't know of any. And as far as what we're trying to do, we're trying to serve the citizens better. A quick glimpse or snapshot of what might occur with that is, is that our rating that we have now, we have a rating of five as far as an insurance rating goes. What that rating translates into the citizens of East Wayne Fire District, coming from a nine-S to a five, there is the possibility of somewhere between forty, maybe a little higher, towards fifty percent of an insurance savings across the year. Our tax rate, as it stands now, is going to be lower than what East Wayne is receiving now. New Hope stands to lose as far as monies from East Wayne Fire District goes. We are merging because of a proposal that was brought about by a professional survey that was done. We have not tried to show any greed. Mr. Legrand, was it? Sir, that was well done on your homework that you did. You did really good on that. And I applaud you for your effort. Your presentation here was great, it was good. As far as, as alluding to some of the comments that he made, we would never move into an agreement if we thought that we could not respond appropriately and efficiently to protect property and life of any citizen of an area that we're going to protect. So New Hope, you- So New Hope, East Wayne, I think, would go on record as saying that what we're here to do is we're here to provide a better service. And we're trying to more efficiently use the resources that we've got, which again, we stand to lose. New Hope Fire Department stands to lose as far as the tax rate goes. So as far as my comments to this is, it is a win for New Hope because we are gaining coverage on our northern side. It's a gain for East Wayne. They're getting the resources that they so desperately need. They have been rock solid for these years and they have held tried and true. But in the forefront, what Chief Salz and Assistant Chief Smith have seen is that they were faltering a bit. So they needed help. They reached out for help and we gave, or we're seeking to give it, should it be approved by you. So that's my comment, sir. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Brian, another question.
Yes, sir.
Brian, like you, sir.
Nothing.
I was going to ask Brian this question. Thank you. I don't know if I need to confuse the situation or not, but we know that the issue with Pinewood's coming up. Is there any thoughts on that, how?
At this time, I have not received an official letter or anything from them yet, given me any dates or anything when that may happen. Till I receive that, I really hadn't done anything with that at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any public comments? Yes, sir.
Always told me if I had a question, ask it. I think it was Chief with East Wayne. He made a comment, and I just won't for my benefit so I don't go out scratching my head wondering. And he made a comment, I think it was on record, "If we can't merge with New Hope, I'll call the merger off." As a citizen, and I do business for a lot of fire companies or fire departments, and New Hope and Sawston are one of them. And I had no personal issue with either one. I just, that comment has just stuck in my head. And it almost sounds like a personal comment. I don't know if there's tension in there or what. I just, that comment, I don't know if y'all, if it hit y'all or not. I just want, for my clarification, "If we can't merge with New Hope, I'll call the merger off." And he also described it as his fire district. I'm sorry, sir, it's my fire district.
That's right.
It's my neighbor's fire district. It's the citizens of Wayne County, whichever district they live in, it's their fire district. Mr. Acoff, you're correct. This was done something with voluntary, voluntarily. You've made that very clear. But at the same time, as Mr. King said in his prayer, you're to be good stewards. If something don't look right and something don't smell right, it's up to the elected commissioners here to maybe look and dig a little further. Because like I said, two of the fire districts or two of the fire departments in East Wayne is, like they said, is still going to be there. If East Wayne is still going to be there, and yes, you can't do nothing without firemen. That's correct. So now, that even furthers my argument. If they're going to keep the fire truck there and you've got people that live even closer, it really just makes good sense, good business. And I just urge the county commissioners to really look into this a little deeper. Because that comment has really just, it's just stuck with me. Once again, if we can't merge with New Hope, Mr. Payton, this is your district. If we can't merge with New Hope, I'll call the merger off. That should register something with you also. Sounds like my eight-year-old, seven-year-old son. If we can't play the way I want to, I'll take my ball home.
Thank you for your comments.
But before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask this question. Are we losing any firemen in this? Are we losing any firemen? I mean, people who are now volunteer firemen, are they still going to be volunteer firemen with someone? So we're not losing any of that? You gave an excellent amount of riding from point to point. I've done things like that myself, not about fire, but about other things I was trying to find. But I heard you talk about not being able to satisfactorily get from point to point. But I listened to the gentleman that just left and he made, he gave us the impression that there would not be a loss of time getting to those specific points. And right this meeting, what we're taking is just a snapshot in what we're trying to hear from you all. I guess we're going to have to have our counterstaff to give us some maps and points before we can really have a greater understanding of what this issue is. But I probably don't think I've ever been around a group that I believe is more passionate about what you do than you all are. I just, you know, I don't think I've met anyone else in any walk of life that's more passionate about what y'all do. But what I'm about is to try to hear the best thing for the greater good for the greater group. And it might mean that we need to have some more information. Like I was sure I would say, we're not about rushing to judgment on this.
Right. And as far as New Hope, they're a great fire department. I mean, they've served the county very well. It's just, as far as where I live at, it just seems like if you look at the maps, it would just make a little more sense to keep the fire districts that are really touching that fire district together. And that's, you know, this is not a smash on, or you know, anything on either fire department.
Because you're more, you're obviously more familiar with the land territory than certainly I am. Are you interested in merging with anyone or just leaving it like it is?
Mr. Mortimer, he's not on the fire department.
Yeah, I'm not on the fire department. I'm just a citizen that lives on Truvine Road. I'm not on the fire department. I'm just a homeowner in the district that is, in the area that's being talked about merging with one fire department or the other. And you know, we were talking about insurance rates and I also looked in that. I think the citizens in Truvine will have the same tax rate whether they merge with New Hope or Sawston. So you know, it's not a tax issue. It just, you know, sound business, whatever you want to call it. It just seems a lot better to merge with your closer fire department than one that's approximately four further miles away.
Oh.
It's fine.
You're looking at it from?
Homeowner.
A homeowner that was not part of the negotiation?
No, sir.
At any stage?
No, sir. This was brought up with a letter.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir.
We need to move forward. Anyone else from the public have anything to say? Okay. I was really hoping that we could take care of both of the matters today on the consolidation of New Hope and East Wayne and also on Eureka and Fayro. The best of my recognition, I have not heard anyone from Fayro or Eureka make any comments. So. Do you want to speak, Mike?
Good morning, gentlemen. My brother, Eureka been chief 25 years, been the fire service 35. Eureka and Fayro, we've done, met with our loggers and stuff and we can be finished in two weeks if we so desire, as far as our loggers concerned and everything else. What we're doing is, you know, both departments have got together. We've all met, our communities, we've talked, those people in the community have come to us. We do have a little bit of difficulty on Waymore Drive. I don't know if they're interested in taking that. But if it comes out, we're not interested in giving up no district. I just want to make that clear. We need to have our tax dollars, we can get to survive just like everybody else. And the only way we can survive is tax rate. Our area is not growing. I feel like we're not going to lose no response time in either place we're going. But I do tell you this here, when you go to start wanting to move district lines now, you're going to start looking at the whole county. You ain't going to look at just right here because you're going to start with a, there's a lot of places in this county that some departments are closer than the other departments. But the lines have been drawn for a long, many years. None of us in this room, probably very few officers, had anything to do with them district lines being drawn. I'm all about doing what's best for the taxpayer. I'm almost doing what's best for the homeowner, home person. And I, you know, and I don't want to get in another dogfight because it's really none of my business what goes on over there. But you know, I've always had an issue with my district with why men would go join the fire department in another district and not join the district which they live in. Because we need all the help at the same time. I mean, I would want to join and serve the district of which my home was in. I mean, just the fact I could go to station and get that truck and have it there a little bit faster. But I think if you go to start wanting to redraw these district lines, I think you may end up having a few more district departments up here in the future wanting you to go redraw a whole lot more district lines. Because in this county, there's a whole lot of other lines that have been drawn years ago. And sometimes, yes, I know, I understand homeowner wanting the best and I want the best for mine. I'm just saying that, you know, this was done voluntarily on us. And I'll be honest with you, it is the people's fire department, we don't own it. But some officers have been in there long enough, we can claim it. We have a good heart to stake in it, not only as a homeowner and a taxpayer, but we've pulled money out of our pockets for years to keep these things going. And even right now with the money we get, it still costs us to be a firefighter. And I'm not here trying to take anything away from anybody. But for Eureka and Fayro's sake, we have just a little streak of land on Waymore Drive and we'd like to keep that. I feel like we can get there and approach that. And again, our paperwork's finished. We're just waiting on this right here to us to finish our thing. And we don't want to be held up too much long. We'd love to have this thing done for a long.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, like I just said before, Mike made his comments. I really want to take care of both these situations today or this consolidations. But it's pretty obvious that the East Wayne and New Hope, we're going to have to, there's been enough discussion that we're going to have to look at it and probably act on it at our next meeting. But I want to, if Mr. Parker.
Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
Okay.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I'll try to be quick.
I'm Chris Gurley, reside at 169 East Wayne Road. I probably stand to gain in this merger as much as anybody on insurance rate, insurance premium reduction. I am the one that stays right across the road from East Wayne Fire Department. I'm hesitant to get up because I have friends, I've been in the fire service for 30 years. I'm fire chief at Belfast. I have property and businesses at Belfast. But I'm hesitant to get up here and say anything because I have friends on all departments. Robbie, Donald, Mr. Limwood Earl. But if my house catches on fire, we don't need a merger to impact the working relationship that East Wayne and New Hope and Sawston has. I mean, because that directly affects me as a homeowner. Because if my house catches on fire, East Wayne, New Hope, and Sawston's coming. You know, a lot of times, as Mr. Limwood Earl said, a lot of people don't like change. I mean, nobody likes change. But it comes evident once in a while that change is the most appropriate thing for the betterment of the citizens. Now, I'm not standing up here to say that New Hope or Sawston is better. Either one, I think they're both of quality fire service. I mean, that's a testament that our leadership in Wayne County, we're one of the, Wayne County is the leader in the fire service, not only in North Carolina, but the nation. If you don't believe it, pick up an FPA manual and you might see your neighbor. That being said, I just want us to make the best decision for the citizens, taking all demographics in order and make the best decision for the citizens of Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? If not, I hear a motion that we close the public hearing.
Just close it.
Okay, the public hearing section is closed. Okay, like I said previously, I really want to take care of these two issues today. It's pretty obvious that we need more discussion on the East Wayne, New Hope merger. But I've heard no opposition to the merger of Eureka and Fayro. The chief says that they already have all their paperwork in place. And I want to put on the floor, make a motion that we table the East Wayne, New Hope consolidation until our next meeting. But I would like to move forward and also in that motion, make a motion that we proceed with the consolidation of Fayro and Eureka Fire Departments, or service districts. And I put in a form of a motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
No, you don't need it.
Don't need a second. All in favor of motion? Or is there any other comments? All in favor of the motion, show a sign of right hand. Thank you all, gentlemen, for being here. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. King. I have a statement to make before they clear out.
Y'all hold up just a minute, please.
Agreed with your motion, Mr. Chairman, because of one reason. And that is, I sense disunity because of what I've heard. Two and a half years ago, I watched this association, Firefighters Association, sort of go at odds because of the racism. And I saw our OES department back against the wall. And I saw something within a fraternal organization that's not supposed to happen when one another supports one another like this Firefighters Association and the firemen and the EMS and all work together to back one another up. And when you look at service districts or you look at division with lines, I've also found in regionalism, thinking on a commissioner basis within a state level, is that there is no one operating in silos anymore. You can't. And you have to sort of erase the lines in your mind somewhat. And I know you do when you're toned out for structural fire because three fire departments show up. And you're not going to argue when you get out there. Because there's just one objective and that's to put the fire out, save a life, that's plain and simple. But my concern here is disunity. For what I've heard is that maybe there was one that was not at the table. And that's unacceptable. Because when you are doing something like this, you have to be at the table. And with anything, you want, as a government body, I'm speaking for myself, is that I want to receive things with clean hands. You guys go out and do whatever you have to do to get it right, but it's your fire department. It's not ours. Yours. And you've got people that show up just chopping it to bits to get toned down. Because these kids, it's the only thing they got. They get in there at 24, 25, 28 years old and out in the rural area. And we're a rural community and they're just wanting to go out there and be a part of something. And they give it all they got. And you guys started years ago, 30, 40, 50 years ago. And you see where we are today and we don't want to lose that. So you know, that's the only reason I voted to table this thing for two more weeks because I would like to see you get together and work it out. And then bring it to us, but work it out. and, and work it out, and then bring it to us, but work it out. And, uh, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Moving on.
Thank you for staying.
Moving on to unfinished business. Uh, we do not have any.
Public comment.
Okay, I'm.
We're a little late on that.
Yeah.
We have our speakers.
It's a little past ten o'clock. We will move forward with our public comment section.
Who is here today?
We have a call. Go ahead and.
to one public comment. Is it, do I need to wait till they return?
No, sir. Go ahead. You have a call.
Uh, yeah, missed a few meetings, and I may not be here for another year or two after today. April fools. But, uh, I do appreciate the high tech that this here and that there, but sure missed the, uh, old chalkboard. Sometimes you gotta draw folks a picture, and I did give Steve Keen, uh, earlier research in the forum, uh, October twenty-eighth of nineteen eighty-six, one of the first forums I went to to hopefully become informed voter, know who to vote for, is for, uh, House of Representatives in Raleigh. It was at the library auditorium, and realized that there was problems in the forum that need to be solved and have advanced, create and construct the solutions to enable the citizens of Wayne County to be the most advanced informed voters on earth. What I shared there are, uh, is the two thousand election paper forum prior to the New York's censoring the ability to advance it even further. And I'm exasperated right now. I seek healthy, in-depth, open discussion. I don't wish to force my opinion on anyone, but a forum should be open discussion where you go with an open mind, more than open mind, a seeking mind, agree to disagree. It's the ability to understand and be understood that advances communications and understanding. Been busy past few months from that, uh, Chamber Commerce Forum, so-called forum at Lane Tree. There was another forum in February twenty-second. I was just catching my breath. Still not done doing, do proactive reporting to find out if these folks initiating it, sponsoring it, hosting it, anticipating, moderating, know what a forum means before the fact. Proactive reporting to enhance the success of that forum. Solve the problems before they happen, so we can raise ideas rather than taxes to meet the competing needs of our tax dollars for medicine, education, and incarceration. There's another forum coming up the fifth at the, not the li- library, but the Herman Park Center, titled Healthy, Wealthy, and Wise, about health and well-being. These are where ideas should come up to lower the high cost of medical care. And I like to have all these, this board and the Board of Education as with me a show and tell. So what I did, did is I gave you two thousand election paper forms. Got three questions. What is your definition of the word forum? Second, do you recognize the forum's foundation of education democracy? The third, which of the following is leading preventable cause of premature death? A, tobacco, B, loneliness and despair, C, other? Please specify. I've added two more questions. Is the heart of volunteer muscle involuntary muscle, both neither other? Please specify. And the fifth one is, what is your definition of the word sabbatical? Though I may not have your bodies there this fifth, uh, April fifth, but hopefully you have your minds, both boards, Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, your understandings on these issues that are imperative to advancing education and health and well-being. Look forward to getting this email to me. I'm quite sure y'all got the email address, your answers or...
Four minutes is up. Thank you for your comment.
Why you think it's not rolling to him?
Anyone else have any public comments? Anyone has any other comments, uh, public comment section is closed. Back to the agenda. No unfinished business, uh, nothing on the consent agenda today. Uh, move into new business, uh, have a presentation on cardiac arrest management protocol and, uh, presentation. Joe, if you would start with that, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, Andrew Kukero, our EMS manager, and Dr. Terry Grant, our medical director, is with us. Andrew been doing a presentation on the cardiac arrest management protocol. Uh, this is a new protocol for Wayne County, but let me emphasize it's for Wayne County. It's a new protocol. It's, it's being done throughout the state as we speak, and very successful. But before I call Andrew up, I want to formally introduce you to Andrew. We've, um, had Andrew on board now for three months. He began January one. Due to some scheduling conflicts between his schedule and our schedule and your schedule, we're not able to bring him here. So it's most fitting today to bring him up to introduce you, and he makes a presentation on this new protocol. Um, Andrew came to us from Edgecombe County. He's highly credentialed. He's brought some great ideas to us and in the process of implementing them. But more importantly to me, they're fresh ideas, and he brings energy. And that's real important to our staff and our organization and our EMS system in Wayne County. And before I ask Andrew to come up, I also recognize Dr. Grant. Dr. Grant has been our medical director for almost twenty-five years now. Um, he goes unrecognized. He's been us, with us through the transition to a paramedic program that went countywide, and, uh, is recognizable throughout the state. I'm very proud of it. We've got, uh, more objectives and goals to get to, but we're on the way now. And, um, Dr. Grant continues to challenge us and our staff daily. And, um, that's good. I'm thankful of that. Dr. Grant has a great commitment to Wayne County, Wayne County EMS, and our people, and I'm most appreciative to that. So now I'd like to ask Andrew to come up for the presentation.
Thank you, Joe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all? Chairman, Vice Chairman, uh, like Joe said, and I appreciate all the good words. I am Andrew Kukero. I'm the new EMS manager. I'm not that new anymore, I guess. I'm kind of getting long in the tooth. It's been three whole months. Um, Dr. Terry Grant is here with us today to show us support, and he's telling me to speed it along. So I'm gonna do my best with that. Um, uh, like, uh, Mr. Gurley said, uh, this is not a new concept in EMS. It's new to the Wayne County EMS system. Um, but the few changes that we're gonna make to our cardiac arrest management is not new to the medicine world in the pre-hospital setting. Uh, it's just bringing it here, implementing a few changes, and, and moving on from there. So.
You want me to drive, or you want to drive?
That, if I, I don't, I can drive it either way. Um, does this, does this actually drive it right? Look at that. I'm feeling good about that. Um, so really, the first question on everyone's mind is, you know, why are we doing this? Well, just like everything, uh, fire service, law enforcement, just your daily lives change every day. What you did yesterday, you, you know, is gonna be different today because of what you learned from yesterday. Um, so pre-hospital medicine's no different. Um, we have to continue to grow and strive and, and move on with, you know, what we've learned from yesterday so we continue to give good care. And as medical professionals, we have to make sure that we're providing that high standard of care to our citizens. And that's really where this change is, is starting to come from. Um, it's changed, and, and this has really come about the last four, five, maybe six years. Um, before that, we kind of did it the same way over and over and over again. You know, that's the definition of insanity, is to keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. So I think it's nice that we're finally in a stage in the pre-hospital medicine world where we've learned from the past, and now we're gonna make changes to be more proactive in the future. Um, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna make sure as a system that we're providing the standard of care and exceeding that standard of care, which is what we really want to have happen. Um, so how do we do this? Well, it's, it's not hard. It's not rocket science. You look at systems that are successful in their cardiac arrest management. You take their good ideas and learn from where they came from, and you implement it into your own system, and that's exactly what we're gonna do here. Um, so like I said, the standard of care has changed, and that's what all medical professionals are held to, is the standard of care, what other people in your same profession are gonna do. So some quick facts. I'm a, I'm a facts guy, so I like stuff like this. Some of these might be a little surprising to you from the systems they're coming from. Um, so right now, and it, and it stays about the same throughout the years, the, the out-of-hospital cardiac arrest save rate, pre-hospital is about seventeen percent nationwide. Stays about that. Sometimes it fluctuates just a little bit, but it always stays about at that level. Um, if, in Detroit, they're sitting at a three percent. Um, the next one that we studied was Nashville. They're at five percent. So it's not always, you know, these huge, big cities is, is what you're looking at as maybe a model or not. Um, so in Austin Travis County, Texas, they're at forty-two percent. Wake County, who's very, very close to here, is at forty-five percent. And Seattle, Washington is the front runner right now, and they have been for the last little while. They're at fifty-seven percent. So they're doing something right. We want to make sure we're doing the same kind of things they're doing. Uh, in my last position, uh, when I walked into that service, they were at a twelve percent save rate, so they were sitting around that national average. When I left, they were at forty-two percent. So the change is working. It doesn't matter if you're, you're an urban area, if you're a rural system. The concept's the same, and it still works regardless of how you implement. It's all about just implementing it. This study was done, excuse me, and, and it's kind of a shocking number, is that your chance of survival can fluctuate up to five hundred percent just because of where you choose to live. And that's a number that an EMS professional has always kind of troubled me, is that just because you don't pick the right town to live in, you may not have a good outcome in the long run. And I don't think that's right. I think as a leader in my profession, that this is something we need to look at as a, as a system-wide issue and change it, and make it that everyone gets the same care no matter what. Um, so what about Wayne County? You know, no one wants to know what the weather is in California for not taking a trip there, right? So what's, what's going on here? Um, so since January of twenty thirteen, uh, Wayne County's run eighty-seven cardiac arrests that have been worked by the providers that showed up. There's been several more that were, were not worked because the person was just too far gone, so they're not included in the study. Um, since we're a paramedic system, all those codes have had a paramedic response. Many of them have had multiple paramedics on the scene due to our QRV system. The ambulance shows up with one medic, and, and other paramedics can show up because of that QRV system, which is a really, uh, a good thing to keep going. Um, so what do we think our out-of-hospital cardiac arrest survival rate is right now? Fourteen percent? No one ever guesses. They always want me to tell them. So it's fourteen percent. So we're right there, right around the national average. That's, it's not bad, but I think, and I know that we can do better with a few minor changes. It's not bad, but we can always improve. Nothing is ever perfect. Every system can always be improved. So what's the difference? Um, why are these other systems that are doing really well, having the good return to spontaneous circulation or ROS rates that they're seeing? Is it the equipment? Our equipment's top-notch. Wayne County has very good, high-quality equipment, so it's not that. Our providers are highly trained. They admit the same standard that paramedics anywhere else admit, so the providers are top-notch. So it's gotta be the medication. The epinephrine that they're pushing in Seattle's gotta be stronger than the med, the epinephrine here in Wayne County. Well, that's obviously not true. It's coming from the same manufacturers. It's the same drugs. So, so what's, what's the difference? You know, my little thinking cap guy's always, always trying to figure that out. So it's all about thought process. It really is. It's simple. It's not as hard as people make it. It's just training the providers to think a little bit differently when they arrive on these calls. That's it. Thought process costs us very little to change, if anything. I mean, it's a very minute amount of money to go in there and teach people how to think a little bit differently. Changing a few simple concepts will help improve the out-of-hospital cardiac arrest save rate here. Um, Dr. Grant knows that. Dr. Cornigie, the assistant medical director, does a great job for us. He knows that as well. And it's simple. It works. I mean, if you argue with math, it's never gonna change. You know, the numbers add up. It works. People are coming back every day from doing it. So a real quick snapshot of what we used to do, so you can kind of see where these changes are gonna come into, because this is something a lot of people don't see on a daily basis. So back in the day, we're gonna call it, EMS has always had a load-and-go concept behind cardiac arrest management. The person has fell out, we're gonna throw them in the truck, and we're gonna drive them to that hospital just as hard and as fast as we can drive them there, and hope people get out of the way in the process. Maybe not the most efficient way of doing it, but that's all we knew. Um, it was based off of the idea that EMS had no real game in the cardiac arrest fight. Our goal was to get you to the hospital where the doctor and the ER staff can do their thing. And there wasn't any research or evidence to prove otherwise. No one ever really looked into it because it was good enough. It just kind of always was the way it was. So we gotta learn to change and adapt to that. Um, we just didn't know any better. And that's really what it comes down to. When I look back over my career, if we were doing this ten, fifteen years ago, you know, we could have been saving a lot more people if we just would have known better. But we just never really looked at it. Um, so that's what we're gonna do. We just did the best we could, and we kept on trekking with that idea. And EMS and your average population, just, that's what they expect us to do. They see it on TV. The blinking box shows up. They throw people in the back. They take them to the hospital, and everyone's better in the end. It's not quite that simple when the screenwriters aren't there to help you out. So we gotta change a little bit, uh, if concept changes behind that. So let's look at the concept behind, the hospitals are, are really where we need to rush off to initially. Um, hospitals are great. They have a great, great function for the citizens. Cardiac arrest management is just, they're, they're the second part of the arrest management. The initial part of the cardiac arrest management is the EMS system. So, um, when someone has a cardiac arrest inside of a hospital, they have a cardiac monitor slash defibrillator. It's all built into one machine. Well, guess what? EMS system has the same thing. We've got it on every ambulance we have. Every QRV has the exact same model. The hospital has a bunch of drugs, epinephrine, bicarbonate, adacovine, all these other medications. My ambulances have the same medications on them, exactly the same drugs, box for box, the same stuff. We have it. Here's something the hospital does that EMS hasn't done in the past. They do CPR standing still. We used to do CPR going down the road at sixty miles an hour. It's a little bit different scenario. Okay? Hospitals take a team approach to work in the cardiac arrest. When there's a cardiac arrest in a hospital, Dr. Grant hits the button, and people flock to the scene, and they work it in that room. EMS is gonna change to that concept. We're gonna go to that cardiac arrest, and we're gonna work it where that person is. And that's really where it comes to. So why did we rush to the ER? Like I said before, it's really all we knew how to do, because that's what every instructor taught us to do. That's what every system medical director told us to do, and, and that's just what we did. So we're gonna keep doing that until we've found a better way to do it. Um, driving patients to the hospital that don't have a pulse is not good for the providers and has poor outcomes for the patients. Dangerous for me to do that as a provider, and we've proven over time that the patients just don't do as well doing it that way. CPR suffers, your drug administration suffers. I don't know if any of you have ever been in the back of an ambulance, even just driving routine to a hospital. It's kind of a bouncy ride. Try doing CPR and pushing medicines while you're holding on for dear life with one hand. It's just, it's not a good way to, to function. So EMS can fix medical and cardiac-related codes. That's really where our, our fight is. Now, trauma cardiac arrests are a little bit different. There are some things that Dr. Grant can do in the emergency room that we can as paramedics. But if it's strictly a medical cardiac arrest, paramedics have the same medicines, the same training to do the same things in the field. Um, so the man you're looking at there is Dr. Grant Myers. He is the medical director and EMS director for Wake County. He has been one of the, probably the most spearheading nationwide voices on the change from rushing to the hospital to work the cardiac arrests in the field. I'm sure you've seen or heard of him along the way. Um, so something he said not so long ago is that cardiac arrest resuscitation is a pre-hospital enterprise, and post-resuscitative care is a hospital enterprise. And this is a man who's been an ER doctor for a long, long time. And he understands the difference of bringing a viable patient into the ER or bringing in someone that's been down twenty, twenty-five, thirty minutes to an, an emergency room physician. They just, there's nothing left to do for them at that point. And that's really what they're looking at. Wake County stats, real quick, from when they, before they started doing any of the, the really advanced, uh, their baseline was twelve percent. That's pretty normal, which you see in systems before they change. Just changing the way they do CPR, they went up to twenty-two percent. Just non-interrupted compressing CPR jumped them ten percent. Um, then they added impedance threshold device, which is what the ITD is, and post-resuscitative hypothermia. So, and then they've obviously went off from there, and their numbers are what they are today. So we gotta, we gotta push those old concepts away, put it on the trial, and get it out of here. We gotta come in with the new ideas. Okay? And that's just the simple facts of how it's gonna work. Um, so really what it breaks down to is we need to change that modality of load-and-go to sit on scene and work the cardiac arrest where we find it. So that's the first bullet point, is work it where we find it, staying on scene. A lot of people aren't comfortable with that idea initially, but when they see it work, it works. Once we start working the code, the provider has to work it like they mean it. They have to be all in a hundred percent, committed to working that cardiac arrest and working it from the start of the protocol to the end of the protocol. Okay? We're gonna stay on scene until we have one of two things happen. The patient gets better, which is what we want to see, forty-two, fifty-seven, uh, eighty-seven percent of the time, maybe, if we ever get that estimate. Or we've... Or we see there's nothing left for this patient to do and we discontinue in the field. Um, those are the two endpoints that are going to happen. More times than not, the patient's going to get a return of spontaneous circulation and we'll package them up and take them on to the hospital. So we're going to work it where we find it. We're going to stay on scene as long as the scene's safe and there's no crazy circumstances that Dr. Grant wants us to still continue to the hospital with. Uh, we're going to work on scene and the provider just has to have, we're going to camp out mentality. You know, we're not in a hurry. We're not in a rush. The best care for this patient is going to be given to them right here, right now by us. And that's, we've trained the staff over the last few months on this idea. We're going out and Brian's going out right now and training them in the field, in their stations, to keep continuing this new process, because it's new. And with anything, the more repetition it is, the better you're going to be in the long run with it. Um, so really, in the long run, at the end of the day, this is what's best for the patient. We're going to have more ROSC in the field, which is what we're looking for. Bring the pulses back as quickly as possible. During the event, people worry about family, friends, bystanders being there. We're training providers this month, uh, to deal with family members. And to handle any questions they have and to help them cope with what's going on to their loved one. So that's already been looked at by the system. We're going to take care of those folks as well, because they're just as much of a patient as the patient is. Um, Dr. Hinchey from Austin Travis, Texas is another, um, per, you know, a well-known speaker on this, uh, topic. And he shared this stat, um, probably a few years ago now. Um, just showing the difference between CPR's correct depth rate and correct, um, speed rate for CPR versus sitting on the scene and, and doing, going down the road. So your correct rate on scene was forty-eight percent. You put that same provider in the back of a moving ambulance, it drops down to nineteen percent. Same thing with the depth correction, you know, to make sure we're compressing the chest the right depth, from seventy-five percent down to fourteen percent. So I'm glad he put that out as a study. I think it was a good study to have. And it just proves once again that we're going down the road is not what we want to be looking for. Um, work it like we mean it. Uh, these new treatment options and concepts are all based off of the patient's response to the therapy. It's really what it boils down to. As long as that patient's still responding to the medications that we're doing, the airways that we're doing, the CPR that we're giving, we're going to continue to work that patient until, like I said, they get better is hopefully the endpoint we're looking for. At no time are we ever going to cut a cardiac arrest short due to time, due to lack of ability to do it anymore. We're going to work it from start to finish a hundred percent of the way every time. There's going to be no letting up until the patient just has no other chance of survival. So ROSC, which I said is a return of spontaneous circulation, the quick version is to get a pulse back. That's, that's what we want. Um, so really, the second bullet is the one that I want us to kind of look at is patients going home to their families neurologically intact is all based off getting ROSC in the field. The sooner we can start the body perfusing the brain with blood on its own, the better chance we have of getting them to the hospital. Dr. Grant's crowd taking over, moving them to an ICU scenario, and then hopefully sending them home. If that doesn't happen, ROSC rate doesn't happen in the field, our go-home rates are always going to be four. So we really have to look at the fact that this is all based around sending people home to their families as close to, if not as they were before this event ever happened. And that's the way we're going to make it happen. Field discontinuation, um, at the end of the day, some folks just can't be saved, and that's unfortunate. It is the truth, though. Um, studies have shown that families do better when they're involved in the cardiac arrest management. I've seen it. I've lived it. A lot of families that I've been fortunate enough to be there to help them through these times have all had positive outcomes. Even if the patient didn't survive, they still had a positive experience with the arrest. They knew we worked hard. They knew we were there looking out for them. We had their backs. Um, we have a presenter, Dr. Holland, coming in from out of the area to come train our command staff on this type of family care, specifically on this type of care, um, what to do if the family member doesn't make it. Uh, with proper care during the code and after the code, families do well. They, they, they learn to heal from it better because they've seen the work and effort that went into the cardiac arrest. So other systems that are doing it, obviously, we're not the only ones in the state, and there's people all across the nation. You got Phoenix, Arizona, Wake County obviously is doing it. Austin Travis, Texas, where Dr. Hinchey is, King County, where Washington is, Johnson County, right next door, is doing the same things. And of course, where I came from is doing it as well, because, you know, I was there, so they did it. So imagine that, right? Uh, so it's good. It's okay. It's all right to chuckle every once in a while. It's okay. Um, give the new ideas a chance. This is a dramatic change from what everybody's used to. It really, it really is. And, and some citizens are going to be asking, why didn't we go to the hospital? This is what's best for that family member. If I fall out right now in front of you, this is how I want to be worked. If my mom or my dad fell out, same thing. This is what's best for that patient outcome. The end. Uh, Dr. Grant, Dr. Cornegy support this. I'm glad Dr. Grant was here to support it in person. Um, we have all the right pieces. We have a tiered system. We have ambulances with paramedics on it. A lot of them have dual paramedics on them. And we have QRVs, and I can send a bunch of paramedics to these codes and not take a lot of ambulance resources off the road. The QRV system is almost perfect for this concept to be implemented and working. Um, so we can do it, and we're going to do it, and we're going to hopefully start seeing these numbers increase here shortly when it's really rolled out a hundred percent. And we're going to make a difference for our citizens, the visitors to Wayne County. And these are the sickest patients we deal with on a daily basis is the cardiac arrest patient. We have a lot of sick folks we transport every day, but these are the end of the road, the hardest, sickest patients to make better. So, uh, I challenge everyone in the room that's heard this to, to take the ideas, think about them, give them a chance. You know, let these numbers start speaking for themselves when we start this. But if you get questioned, you know, be supportive of it. You know, go out there and say, hey, this works. We've seen the numbers. Now we want to start seeing the results, and that's what I'm here to do, is bring the results back. And show that this is working in our system, just like it does everywhere else. It's not, it's not hard to understand that CPR is CPR and cardiac arrest management is the same no matter where you go. Um, the end of the day, we're going to save lives. We're going to have a good, high ROSC rate in the system, which is going to bring a lot more viable patients to the hospital for them to do their after-cardiac arrest care. And hopefully we'll have a lot of survivor stories coming back and we'll see them out in the community later on. Um, I kind of went through it quick. I know you've had a long warning, so if there's anything I didn't cover really well, by all means, ask a question. Um, but I appreciate your time and a tremendous amount of support from you all. Mr. Gurley, Dr. Grant, my staff have been awesome since I've been here, and I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with.
Thank you, Andrew.
Any questions for Andrew?
Just, I appreciate you doing this. I think it's a great idea. Um, at what timeframe do you think you can come back, start giving us some updates?
Um, realistically, um, your, your best rate, probably about three or four months, you'll get a real good snapshot of what's going on. Yeah, about quarterly. Um, and it all depends. I could walk out of here and we'd not run a cardiac arrest for six months, you know, because that's just how my luck is sometimes, um, which is good. Um, but really, I mean theoretically, uh, you know, we're looking, you know, quarterly or so would probably be a good roundabout number. It takes a little while for those numbers to really jump up initially, uh, because it's new to the providers, too. We're still training as we go, so.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. Welcome to Wayne County.
Well, thank you, sir.
You're coming here and, and making a, a real difference, and, uh, I applaud Mr. Gurley for seeking you out and bringing you here.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm just as tickled as I can be to be here. Uh, this is a great system. I'm very honored to be here and, and to get a chance to, uh, to, to bring some of the ideas to the table and see what we can do to improve things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Mr. Kamali.
Uh, needless to say, we're none of us in a rush to give you any activity, but.
I, and I, I would just as be happy to come back in a quarter and say that no one's had a cardiac arrest.
But I, I, I do also want to end my voice to, uh, your presentation, uh, just the fact that you're telling us that you all, and with our equipment and our resources and assets that are already here, you're bringing something to the table that can help all of our citizens in a rapid way. And, uh, I think that's the heart of any family is that help is not going to arrive. What, I have a question to the, what is the average arrival time from the time you get the nine-one-one called until you arrive at the site that needs the help? What is the average?
Average is less than eight minutes to have an ALS provider on your doorstep.
And we have our equipment stationed around some of the latest SUVs. They're pretty much scattered of, of, of.
Yes, sir. Uh, the whole system is, is, all of our units, the QRVs and all, are staged geographically throughout the areas to try and provide the quickest, most available coverage that we can with nine ambulances and three QRVs. Um, the ambulances are ambulances, you know, so once they're on a call, they're pretty much dedicated to the call. Um, they have to transport the patient to the hospital. The QRV system, we currently carry three QRVs. One of those is the shift supervisor. Um, and we have one on the north end and the south end, and then the supervisor is stationed here in town. And what that gives us the opportunity to do is, one, keep a paramedic in service more times than not. Um, because if that ambulance does transport the patient, obviously the QRV medic a lot of times isn't going with them. And they can stay in that service area and bring a paramedic to those, uh, high acuity calls quickly and efficiently. They may not be able to transport you, but you still have a, a certified paramedic with all the equipment at your door, giving you that pre-hospital care while they wait for that second unit to come in to, to bridge that transport gap. Um, they do run on certain calls. They're, they're pre-programmed into the CAD system, be sent with ambulances on certain types of responses. And that's to get that extra set of paramedic hands on a bad scene quickly. Um, I, I don't know if I'm answering that question exactly how you were looking at it, but if you need any more clarification. Really what they do is give us the ability to keep more medics on the road more of the time. And that's a very efficient, um, citizen-friendly model to follow. And, and I was tickled when I came here and Mr. Gurley said we had QRVs. Uh, it's a great thing to have, and a lot, and a lot of systems, you know, throughout their growth have lost that QRV system unfortunately, and I think it.
What's a QRV?
A quick, a quick response vehicle. Uh, most of the time, it's a, uh, an SUV like a, a Tahoe or an Explorer with a paramedic in it. And we have all the paramedic equipment. We just carry a little bit less than the ambulance does. An ambulance is like a little roll-in emergency room. The QRV carries it all in bags, so they have, you know, instead of, you know, ten Band-Aids, they have five. Ten tubes, they've got one tube. And, and it just gives us the ability to bring that ALS care to your house that much quicker. Staging, um, as resources get depleted in different areas, you know, Mount Olive and Dudley go out on a call. We'll move a truck down or a QRV, or sometimes both, depending on call volume, to, to bridge that response gap. Now, they won't leave completely out of their district to stage, um, but they're going to move closer to that, that imaginary line that we've all been talking about this morning. Um, to help, you know, instead of a twenty-minute response time, now we're going to cut it down to a, a nine-minute response time if, you know, they're staged correctly. And a lot of times our QRV medics are, are following those ambulances. They know that south, the south end gets busy. They'll move down there if they're not already down there and make sure we have a paramedic still in that district to serve the citizens better.
You, I'm sorry. One quick, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned, uh, if the family is involved in that management of that, what do you advise a family to do? I mean, between the time they call or the time they determine the problem.
Initially, obviously, is recognizing the fact that your loved one is sick earlier is better. Um, once they've gone into a cardiac arrest, they're obviously very, very sick, and it, and it's harder for us to bring them back from that point. So if they're not doing well, by all means, call nine-one-one before they get to that point. But once they recognize their loved one has, um, passed out, they're not breathing, they don't know if they have a pulse or not, you know, activate the nine-one-one system, get that telecommunicator on the line so they can get us dispatched as quickly as possible. Really going out and finding a CPR program is probably one of the best pieces of advice I can give to any citizen or, or resident. And that's what's going to help continue your loved one's care better is to start in-house CPR, as we call it, you know, layperson CPR, and, and get them to start pushing on the person's chest. Um, any blood flow to the brain helps save that brain's function. And even if we're four minutes down the road without any pre-arrival CPR, that's four minutes without blood flow to that patient's brain. And that's, that's going to lessen their chance of survival, so any CPR is good CPR. Even if it's not textbook perfect, any CPR is better than no CPR, so. Um, activation of the nine-one-one system and then going out and getting educated on a CPR program, obviously would be my top two things to recommend.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to just say thank you for bringing a new perspective and new eyes to Wayne County. Uh, I've been keeping up with you through Mr. Joe Gurley and others. But, uh, yes, I just wanted to say I appreciate you being here. Uh, I can pronounce your last name, Kokero, but I can never spell it. I just want to let you know that.
You're doing better than a lot of people just pronouncing it, sir. That's excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Comment?
I, I, I want to ask Dr. Grant if he's got anything that he would like to add first, if you don't mind.
Just a question for, before we, before we comment.
First off, thank you for all of the support that you do provide for the citizens of Wayne County and for the EMS system that we have here in Wayne County. And we have an excellent system, and we're excited that Andrew has come to help lead our system. Um, we certainly have room that we need to continue to improve. Um, I remember very well when Mr. Gurley and I met and started to develop our paramedic system and agreed that we developed, um, throughout the, um, EMS line, um, that we broke down a number of years ago. Um, that we had to, um, challenge our citizens and our commissioners, um, and our EMS providers to be able to provide that service that we need for the citizens of the county. I think we've done that. I think we have an excellent system in place. We still have a bunch of, of folks that need to deal with change, um, and change is a challenge. We, when I started doing CPR back twenty-five years ago, we taught everybody to do, um, four stacked breaths and fifteen compressions, and you had to do it perfectly on a mannequin, and now they're saying, you don't even have to breathe for people anymore. Just do chest compressions on them. Um, so we've made a lot of changes, and medicine is changing every day, and we want to continue to be at the, the front of that change here with Wayne County EMS. Um, our equipment is outstanding. Um, our support is outstanding. Our EMS providers are dedicated individuals, and we need to continue to support them and provide them the education they need, um, to provide care for our citizens. Um, so I thank you guys for all the help that you've given us. Um, and when we talked about cardiac arrest, I just leaned over to the guy sitting next to me and I said, uh, where's your closest defibrillator? If one of these guys falls over right now, where's your closest defibrillator?
Call nine-one-one.
So we would call an ambulance to bring in here. Um, but, you know, the people in Seattle, Washington have their wonderful success rates because they've trained the citizens to do bystander CPR, and they have defibrillators in every Starbucks on every corner. Um, and, you know, they have rapid response to defibrillation and rapid response to bystander CPR. Um, and those are things that we need to continue to work on in our system. Um, a number of years ago, I did a ALS training out at Wayne Community College, and, and I wrote a prescription for them to get a defibrillator. And they said, okay, we've got this defibrillator. It costs three thousand dollars. Now, okay, everybody is going to be locked in this bottom drawer down here. So if anybody has a need, you know, you have to call security and go get the key at the main office, and it's locked down here in the bottom drawer. And obviously, I said, no, guys, that's not what you want to do. You want to hang it on the wall. Um, you know, you want to advertise it. It's your fire extinguisher. It's your lifeline. So, you know, we need to work on those concepts of pre-hospital care still in our county, and hopefully we'll be able to do that with the leadership of Andrew. And I'll be glad to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Dr. Grant?
Just want to thank you for your dedication to helping us. I know, uh, the pay that we give you for your, uh, advice and all is, uh, probably less than what a county commissioner makes, but, but we do appreciate what, what you do for Wayne County and the citizens of Wayne County and, and, and the staff at the hospital.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. King, you've had a comment.
Yes, sir. A couple of comments, if I could. Uh, I'd like to question first, what are the initiatives that we are taking now with the Health Department? And having the Health Department involved moving forward? Okay, I can get into a weave with maybe a couple of things that'll help you. Our, in two thousand, our census showed that, um, twenty-six percent of the total population in Wayne County was over fifty. Two thousand and ten, it's about thirty-two, thirty-three percent. We have an obesity problem. We're working on that through health initiatives that the Health Department is putting on. Um, we are having, um, heart issues. So with that in our county, what can you do to enhance what you're trying to do with the Health Department? Can you give us some insight there?
Everything that I, I've based, um, a lot of my career on is public education. Um, we can't help anyone that doesn't want to help themselves or isn't educated enough to help themselves ahead of time. Um, I came in kind of late into this fiscal year's budget, um, so we're planning in the next budget year uh, to move on with a more aggressive, uh, public education programs. CPR outreach, you know, it's hard to find a CPR class if they're not offered every day. Um, so I'm sure the Health Department, I mean, I've spoke with, uh, their director a couple of times now, maybe three or four times. And I think we have the same visions. We have different modes of getting to that same vision sometimes. Uh, but I think as, as a team effort, because it is, it is a public health, uh, problem. I mean, really. Uh, we have to look at it from the bigger picture of, you know, can we prevent these cardiac arrests from happening, or at least can we delay them from happening? And, uh, I think that's where the public education, their outreach programs, and, and my next year's outreach programs are really going to kind of nest together very well, sir. And I think that's where the public education, their outreach programs and my next year's outreach programs are really gonna kind of nest together very well, sir.
Just a comment with that said is that being in a rural area, using the training citizens, as Dr. Grant had mentioned. Training citizens, getting out into the rural areas in the fire departments, whether they be in the churches or we be in the schools with the CPR training. Just the compression part, if we can get some initiative in the Wayne Health Department, getting it out into the counties, into the rural areas. My concern, looking at the big picture, is that no one wants a light at an interchange until someone gets killed at the interchange. Being in the rural area, if you pass away and don't get to the hospital, perception is, why didn't you get my father to the hospital? Why couldn't my granddad get to the hospital or my grandmother? What we're seeing today is that we're going to have just as good a care, just as good of care. Because we have the units, we have the supplies, we have the medicine, we have all that the hospital has. So we're gonna have just as good a care in the field as we will at the hospital with a team approach. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So with the citizens, when they have this to happen to them, anywhere in the county. We're a county unit in EMS, we've taken that over some years ago, so it's up to us to sustain that with good people, with the right pay. And to get the best qualified people to have in these units, that's what I'm understanding.
Yes, sir, you're exactly correct.
Okay, well, that's what the citizens need to understand. So what better way to partner is that to partner with the Health Department? And to implement these ideas in a way that, working together, that you can get it done faster so we can get the percentages up quicker. As Commissioner Page was asking, when can we have these, these numbers? Absolutely, I, I am not cautiously optimistic, I am optimistic because of what I've heard today. Because you have the support from the hospital, you have the support from the commissioners, I'm sure. I just want to get deeper into the weeds as you work forward. I don't know what has been in the past with OES directors and Health Department directors and so forth and so on. But I would strongly recommend that you get with the Health Department, you look at the data, you know where possibly, Mr. Davenport. Where the sales are in the county, where there are heart issues, where there is unhealthy living. I don't know if we know that or not, you know, that's beyond my pay grade. But I certainly would ask that you coordinate and collaborate with them to make this program work.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, gentlemen.
Going from this connection program presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Akot, Chairman Cromarty, Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be here. You know, Andrew kind of took a little bit of my thunder and what I was gonna talk about the day. I'm gonna have to start getting them before these guys, so they don't take away my thunder. I will say, you know, to kind of help move that along, Commissioner King, is we actually have had some discussions. So there has been some initiative taken, it's been introductory at this point in time. But I think, I think we have capability to continue to improve our partnership. Also, I hope that, even though I applaud their introduction to their new protocol in that. I will also happen to say that, of course, the gain of that is to make sure that every time there is a cardiac event, that the EMS can get a vital patient to the hospital. That's, that's the gain there. But we hope that through the continued message that we're talking about, about Go Wayne Go and other issues about a healthier lifestyle, we'll have fewer cardiac events. That's, that's what we're going for, that's the true prevention of public health. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today, I'm here to talk briefly to the Commissioners about a grant opportunity that we have, that I would like you to take action on. This is the Young Families Connect Grant that we have an opportunity to obtain through the Health Department. This is offered through the Office of Adolescence Health. And this grant is a three, well, technically a four-year grant, but the first year is one month. We, we got on, yeah, that's, I know it's a little strange, we, we got on this very late. We almost missed the opportunity to get this grant because it was being pursued by other, other agencies in the, in the county. But we had the opportunity to apply for it and we were awarded the grant, assuming that we have opportunity to move forward with it. In the Young, the Young Families Connect Grant, let me tell you a little bit about, about this grant. As you've heard people talk up here today, Andrew stole a little bit of my thunder about you can give people education, but that doesn't, you know, necessarily get anywhere if they don't act upon the education. This goes back to the whole statement about leading a horse to water. You can, you can give some person a shovel, but it won't dig a hole, it takes that capacity to do it. And this is what this grant does. And this grant works with about seventy young or expecting parents in Wayne County. To give them some of the essential components that we are talking about, about resiliency, independency. What this does is it engages these young parents to increase their self-sufficiency, to improve their health and wellness. Because healthier parents raise healthier children. And it also, by doing that, it improves their parenting skills for, for, for the ages of these young parents. Our targeting population is from thirteen to twenty-four years of age. As we know, we have challenges with poor social, educational, and health outcomes. We have same challenges as many communities. I look at this grant as being a great opportunity for us. The first year, which is that one month, is an award of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The remaining three years will be an award of one hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. This grant consists of an advisory council that will be part of our deliverables that will develop partnerships which we've already brought to the table. And this is another thing I like to, I like to brag a little bit about this, again, Wayne County, I mean, I think we can't brag about it enough. This is not a Health Department's initiative in and of itself. We're the lead agency, but the bottom line is we rely on our support of our partners, these dedicated, committed partners. I'm gonna name a few of those in this grant. We have the University of Mount Olive, still getting used to saying that, but the University of Mount Olive. The Partnership for Children, Wages Watch, Wayne Community College. Along with the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, who will be doing, looking at a research component for this as we implement. This is a new grant, this is not, the first time this grant has actually ever been, been offered. And again, it's about getting on the front end of our social challenges with health, reliability, independency, and self-sufficiency. And not getting on the back end, where, you know, sometimes that's what we do. We, as part of our services to our citizens, sometimes we, we respond at the end, end of this. But this is an opportunity to get, to affect some young families, to teach them the skills they need, get them the education they need. And hopefully, that can make them successful, make them successful parents, is what this is. And this is the Young Families Connect Grant. I'll offer it up to any questions, and I'll ask that the board take some action on approving this grant for the Health Department to move forward.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was just looking for him to just briefly mention Go Wayne Go a little bit, just a little bit.
You would like me to mention it?
Yes.
Were we, as a status update?
Yes.
Okay. Well, currently, we have recently put together our strategic planning team. We're actually moving forward in this year, twenty fourteen, with the new, we're gonna develop a strategic plan. We started the initiative Go Wayne Go, which you all know is about increased physical activity and nutrition. But we know that we can't just stop there, we have to have a plan moving to the future. Because these numbers that we're changing are long-term numbers, this, I've mentioned, you've probably mentioned before about the race versus a marathon component. And would like to just say that, I'm proud to say that we recently had Laura Edwards from the Center for a Healthy North Carolina come down. And she has opportunity to work with us on getting a Duke Endowment Grant. And this has been another opportunity, I think, to show the, the model of Go Wayne Go and the Healthy Wayne Task Force is, is putting a little pressure on us, on all of our partners, including myself. Because we've become kind of a focus point for not just people in the state of North Carolina, but actually nationwide. When Laura Edwards came down to meet with the Healthy Wayne Task Force the other day and Commissioner Bell was in that meeting, that we went over our hot wash scenario. We talked about where we, where we started, where we've been, what we've done, our successes. Some people call it lessons learned, I don't mind calling them failures, because I think you gotta admit, we have a few failures. But that's what makes you better by encountering a failure and figuring out how to not do that again. And we talked about that, and she looked, she looked at me after the meeting and she said, I said, well, what do you think? Are we just scrambling around, running around in circles trying to figure out what to do? She said, no. She said, I'll be honest with you, she said, I've been in several meetings like this and you guys are light years ahead of other communities in actually bringing these partnerships together and having a working process already. You, you haven't, you're having successful outcomes. Now, I don't take that as saying we're anywhere close to being where we are, where we need to be. We are where we are, and we have a lot of room to grow because this is an extremely complex scenario. But, but things like, like for example, this grant, coupled with this partnership relationship that we have here in Wayne County, I think is gonna continue to allow us to have that successful model. And Go Wayne Go, I think it's got a lot of potential to keep going, the message is out there, people are participating, and we have more things in store for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I was looking at this and, you know, and we do have a problem, we need to address this, and I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing that. But you know, you're sending them to other agencies, you know, to help them out. Is there, and I know not everybody falls in this category, but is there any sort of job component in this thing? Seeking jobs and that kind of thing, or?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir, it is.
And I've looked for it, and I just didn't quite, didn't see it.
All right, I see, it might put me on the spot here, try to locate it in this grant, but this, we're working with, we're working with the University of Mount Olive. And hopefully, working with the Wayne Community College, and see, they put on career fairs. And so part of our process with this deliverables is to get these young people not only education, but to help set them up with some career, career objectives. They do, I'm gonna call it the wrong thing, but it's effectively like a life plan. So we start with these young parents and we don't just say, okay, you need to be a good parent, you need to know how to raise a child. We have to sit down and work with them through our staff to develop a life plan for these, for these young parents. And we keep them on track with that life plan. What is your goal, what do you want to do, do you want to be a carpenter, do you want to be a banker? You know, well, here, let's help get you into the right career field, let's get you some parenting skills so you can, you can parent a child. Because we all know that there's an encumbrance for young children who's got children. And now, we, we're not gonna avoid that situation currently, but we can work on trying to empower these young people. So yeah, it is, there is a linking there to link these young people up with some career goals and some career direction. Through the career fairs and university, things like that.
Well, that's, that's really important, you know, because self-sufficiency is the key to this. Otherwise, you stay trapped in the same thing, you'll be writing raps everywhere again.
Yes, sir.
So you've got to move people out of that and to, and doing that, going to work is how you do that. One other quick question, it was on page ten on our, on our thing about, and it's number ten, play the gift card, what is that?
Oh, the, the incentive cards. Let's see, let me get to your page, you're on what page?
It's page ten in our book. And it is actually number ten.
Okay, what we do is because we have a, we have basically like a graduation program with this. So there's some incentives included for the, for the participants. We're focusing on seven, seventy young expecting parents. This is, this is females and males, this is not exclusive to one gender. If they're expecting parents, they can be eligible for this, for this program. With the incentive cards effectively, is as they graduate through a certain achievement, whether they take their Incredible Years program and successfully complete it. We give them an incentive, they get an incentive card effectively. And I think it's something along the lines of like ten, twenty-dollar gift card. And that, that's an incentive to encourage them to continue to participate in the program, to move through and actually graduate through the different tiers. Because our goal is to get these young parents through this entire year-long process. So that they get, been given education, parenting skills, they understand about domestic violence, about child abuse. They understand about how to obtain education. We link them up with the universities and through the school system to get, attain their education, graduation, whether it be high school or college. And so all of that allows them to have, it's only, I think, a two or three-tiered incentive approach.
One other question, and I see you got travel voucher in there too, so at what rate are we reimbursing these people on travel?
These are like ten-dollar gas cards. And it's mainly for those that have cards but are struggling, because a lot of these young people that we start out with trying to build them some education and get them into jobs, you know, they don't, they don't have jobs. And that's part of this program is to get them linked with a job and give them a career focus so they can raise their children with that self-sufficiency. And part of that is the gas cards. We give those out again for participation, I think it's a ten-dollar card, and that's allow them to put gas in their car to come to the trainings. There's three trainings, I think, that they attend, and that's what that's for. And then like daycare is provided by the partnership, so if they already have children, because some of them are expecting and some of them have children. When they come to the, to the education classes, they'll, they'll, like partnership will provide free daycare for them so they can actually be attentive in the class.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize our Health Director to proceed on with obtaining. Have a motion on the floor, any comments?
Yes, sir, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't understand, first, is this money the grant? Is, is this just a, we don't match it, is there anything the county, the county has nothing to do as far as funding this?
There's no match.
First year, second, third, fourth year, you're saying it's gonna be a hundred and eight thousand each year?
Hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
Hundred and eighty-eight thousand?
Four hundred and forty dollars, yes, sir, Mr. Page.
Four hundred and forty, okay, and that's for how long?
That'll be three years.
Okay, for three years. And this is just a float through then, okay? Has the Health Department Board, have you gone before the Board on this? And what was their recommendation?
They supported this, moving forward with this grant.
Okay. At the end of the third year, are you anticipating any other funds to come in and support this program?
Well, honestly, Commissioner King, that's, that's really hard for me to predict, but no, I'm not expecting anything different except for opportunity to apply for the grant, a continuation. After three years, they, they may offer back up again and we would be eligible to reapply. What we do with staffing that we hire to coordinate is, we, we let, they sign a statement stating that they understand that they're hired under, under a grant premise. And if the grant expires, then of course, we, you know, their stipulation process would be we would no longer employ them unless we have a means to find them a position and get it approved and so on. But it depends on the Health Department's needs. And I evaluate that, you know, as we get closer to that, to that benchmark, if we come on, I'll look at, see how do we need to utilize the staff? If we have the ability to move them into positions without creating additional positions? And if we do, we do that, if not, then, I mean, we've, we've done that in the past, we've had people work for three years under a grant cycle. But they understood going in, as they accept the position, that if that grant terminates and we cannot renew it, then their job could, could terminate as well.
How many jobs you think this will generate?
This is two jobs in this grant here, we have a coordinator and an assistant coordinator, and they'll do case management as part of their job. They're not, one of them will primarily coordinate with the partners to make sure the deliverables are met. Because as we come in, we'll have different partners doing different components such as the, the health educate, I mean, the education component. The Incredible Years parenting program, so on, that we'll have partners working with us to do those. And the coordinator will make sure those partners are meeting the deliverables and staying on cue to those. And then the other facilitator will actually work as an assistant to that coordinator, but they'll also do case management with these young parents. And case management comes in too, if, if there's been a demonstration of high-risk factors in their, in their family. Development delays with child or whatever that the, that the parents have. This case manager helps to link those parents and that child up with effective resources and hopefully help to work on the early prevention of some of these issues that they, they encounter in high-risk families.
So what you'll do is get data from these case management workers in reference to this particular program for adolescent care. Because you've mentioned ages between thirteen and twenty-four. So as an indicator, you'll have indicators generated through, through this program that at the end of four years, the first year, well, a month, three years, at the end of three years. You will have the data to understand more fully if we need to go forward to fund this when the grant runs out.
Yes, sir.
So you'll be able to give that history to the general manager, to the, to the manager, county manager. And, and the reason I'm saying that, just a little caveat, is that, you know as well as I do, that probably ninety, ninety-one percent of all the monies that come through the county are coming from the federal or state level. federal or state levels.
Yes, sir.
And we're having to generate somewhere between 8 and 11% annually to fund all these extra programs that come and are not funded. Is that correct? Is it close to?
Are you talking about just for public health?
No, sir, I'm talking about total programs for the county, somewhere between 8 and 11%. Is it more than that?
No, because the property tax and sales tax would probably be about 60% of your revenue.
How much of the total revenue and the budget comes from state and federal funds?
I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
I have either of them.
Percentage-wise?
Yeah, that would be closer.
Okay.
For the Health Department, or?
No, just for total.
County, county.
I'm just trying to get it in my head of total monies, DSS, Health Department, school, all this, that, what kind of monies we have to generate through property tax and sales tax to continue the programs once the grants run out. We get so many grants that run out over a period of time that we have to sustain it by either raising property taxes or depending on sales tax receipts. And I'm just trying to get it in my mind, how much more, if programs begin to run out because of grants running out?
I would go into it with the understanding it's a three-year program.
All right.
And you're not making any commitment to continue it, and he understands that, and the state understands that. So I think they're looking at it, if it works, then perhaps this is an initiative they need to continue.
But you'll be able to chart that through?
Yes, sir.
These indicators that your people will have.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Keen, if you'll allow me, there was another grant that was originally the precursor of this grant, and I personally had some problems with, as far as how the deliverables were assigned. And so that grant actually went away. It was decided that that grant was no longer even going to be offered. It basically dissolved, and they restructured that grant with a better level of deliverables, more measurable, outcome-driven metrics is the term we use in the Health System, outcome-driven metrics. And that became the evolution of this grant, which we were a participant in the previous grant, but we were not the lead agency. In this grant, we would be the lead agency. So, yeah, because that's what the goal is. Our goal is to see in these programs, to see the outcomes, to work with the young parents, to really make them self-sufficient, to work on, like I said, that early stage. We've shown time and time again that, you know, there's a, sometimes there's what they call generational or cyclic poverty, and, you know, the only way to get ahead of that is to try to get young parents to be viable, successful, having a job, holding out a job, and also understanding how to be good parents, so that they're raising children that perpetuate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I just, one follow-up comment, is that for the last five years, we have seen our family planning funding that's come up through our budget amendments that we're seeing decrease, 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 and this looks like, to me, it could be a part of family planning, that's what I'm hearing, between a 13-year-old up to a 24-year-old, certainly generating a family at the age of 13 would seem to me almost impossible in today's world, but it's happening, and with cutting of the funds on family planning, it just puts a bigger burden on the county to have to sustain any program that has to do with this arena, this system that we're working in. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. King. My only comment is, is, and Mr. King just touched on my concerns also, is we're looking at 2017, when the grant runs out, I just, I cannot, nothing against your program and your presentation, but I just cannot, for the life of me, honestly say that, I don't want to see another program that is funded by the state or the federal government, and when it runs out, they're gonna mandate that we had to continue to do it, not say that's not a good program, but I just, I cannot visualize, just forward, taking on another project without some guarantee that when the...
Money expires.
When the money expires, if it's not renewed, it goes away, because I just cannot see us taking on any other projects that's gonna be mandated later, and they're gonna have the advantage of saying, "Well, you've done it for three years and it's working, now you've got to maintain it." And I just, I just want to make sure that when this runs out, that the county's not gonna be responsible, because Mr. King hit on, I mean, as far as raising property taxes and all, I think this board has shown that we're not for raising property tax, we're for lowering property tax. Thank you for your comment, Mr. King.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
Usually those grants where they want you to take it over at the end of, it's stated upfront. If it's not stated, we don't have to follow through on a grant that runs out three years from now.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you allow me, Chairman, I can just respond to maybe help ease some of the concerns. I fully understand where you're both coming from in that regards, and I have no problem with making that determination. What we do is we evaluate the program. Just to historically verify that, is recently, we had a program at the Health Department that was a grant-funded program for three years, and we got $300,000 a year to do that program. Part of that program had stipulation that you work on developing a self-sustaining model at the end of the program. Well, when it came time for the pursuit of that process, we didn't have a plan. The group did not have an actual future plan, sustainability plan, that's what I was looking for, sustainability plan. And I terminated that grant, and of course, the staff, people that were involved were let go. They, like I said, they come in understanding that, we make no allusions to them, but like I said, they sign a statement, and I have no problem with addressing that as we come in. What I'll do is, as we get to the end of these grant cycles, depending on the success and impact of our community, I will come to you in earnest and give you my opinion, because y'all know I don't hold that back, I will give you my opinion on what viability of our new direction would be, and I think it's something that we want to entertain moving forward with on a county level. But like I said, it really depends on the circumstances, but most of the time, like I said, they understand the grant has an expiration date, and at that point in time, we can reapply for the grant if it's continued, or we move on.
Mr. Mayor. Question, are we gonna have to add county employees to implement this, or use existing?
Well, right now, we have one employee that's in a part-time position that may be eligible. We have to advertise the position and interview candidates for this position, but we have a part-time employee that's actually a candidate, could move into a full-time position under this.
So in essence, it is gonna cost the county? We're saying this grant's not gonna cost the county.
But the grant will pay for that.
The grant will pay for that.
Yeah, the grant's gonna pay for the salary addition.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And so it really won't cost the county any additional dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What they'll do is take a part-time person, put them to a full-time person.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a recommendation to you, if there's that kind of concern on the Board, I would recommend that you put in your motion that you're clarifying that you approve it only for the period of the grant, and that this is no commitment for any ongoing county funding.
And Mr. Chairman, I modify my motion. I assumed that the other Board members would recognize, I wouldn't have made that motion if I felt like we would have in fact be obligated to continue it, but I will make that as an addition to my motion.
I didn't assume that at all.
And then that clarifies that it's in the record, and everybody's upfront with it from day one, but Commissioner Bell makes an excellent point. Every grant I've ever seen that required payment after the fact, that's stipulated in there. For instance, the COPS grants, where you hired additional deputy sheriffs for about three years, you are making a commitment on the front end that you've got to keep them on board.
Correct.
But this does not have that, and our approval of it is making it crystal clear that we're not doing this.
That's a good idea.
Change. So you amend your?
I did amend my motion to include that wording.
Okay. You have that, Madam Plurk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, Sheriff sign the right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it. You have a good day.
Motion to approve the National County Government Month Proclamation.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna read the resolution here. National County Government Month, April 2014, ready and resilient counties prepare, respond, thrive. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities, and whereas counties build infrastructure, provide health care, help administer justice, keep communities safe, run elections, manage solid waste, keep records, and much more, and whereas Wayne County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in sensible, cost-effective ways. And whereas, in order to remain healthy, vibrant, safe, and economically competitive, America's counties must be able to anticipate and adapt to all types of change. And whereas, through National Association of Counties, NACO, President Linda Langston's Resilient Counties Initiative, NACO is encouraging counties to focus on how they prepare and respond to natural disasters and emergencies, or any situation that counties may face, such as economic recovery or public health and safety challenges. And whereas Wayne County and other counties across the country actively provide their own programs and service to the public they serve. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim April 2014 as County Government Month in Wayne County, with special emphasis on a ready and resilient county, and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities, adopt that this first day of April 2014. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution this morning.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King.
As we, most of us, I guess, remember is that the NACO conference this year, we talked about the Ready and Resilience Counties Initiative, and in particular, I remember Commissioner Bell and I having a great conversation at lunch about involving our children here in this, and to bring education as part of promoting the governance within our county, and having a collaborative effort, working with the charter schools, the private schools, the public schools, and all kids in the possibly high school arena, to get them involved, to look at our governance in this county, and go to the city council meetings, and go to the Commissioners' meetings, and I'm just hoping that this month, that maybe in some way, that the kids of the county will do something within the educational system, to, whether it's through economics, or through their governance, or I don't know what courses, or through the curriculum that they have in the system. But I think this is a great program, that this initiative that the National Association of Counties has put together for the United States, and just hope that we can be a bigger part of that as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I have a motion on the floor, all in favor of motion, show the sign of the right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Motion to approve Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. Mr. Page.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. National County Government Month, April 2014, ready, whoops, I'm on the wrong page, darn it, I'm sorry. I'm gonna read yours again, I'm sorry. Child Abuse Prevention Month, and April 2014. I'm sorry, I forgot my lapel pen, it's sitting on my desk in my office at home, so remember to get you your lapel pen. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets, and whereas all children deserve to be safe, to have safe, stable, nurturing, and healthy homes and communities that foster their well-being, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a public responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of Wayne County and the state, and whereas parents need support and resources to cope with stress and nurture their children to grow up to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faiths, communities, health care providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim 2000, April 2014, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Wayne County, and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and business to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, this first day of April 2014. And, Mr. Chairman, I put that in the form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor of motion, all show the sign of the right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Page. Budget Amendments, Ms. Hall.
Today, we have two budget amendments. Your first budget amendment is number 305. This is for the sewer fund. We are increasing the professional services line item $13,200, the laboratory services $3,000, for a total of $16,200, with earnings supported through earnings appropriated. This is to appropriate funds for flow monitoring, smoke testing, and laboratory testing of our sewer lines.
This is for the I and I problem that we have, and so we need to move this money in order to be able to do that, move forward with it. Once we get the results of this, then we'll be able to document what kind of repairs we need to make and move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, move, approve. I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If no discussion, everyone show the sign of the right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Budget Amendment Number 303, this is a budget amendment to correct accounting. It is moving a vehicle purchased by the Sheriff's Office from a non-capital line item to a capital line item. We have to account for these and audit it for our audit. So it was actually coded to a line item that collects the information for items that cost less than $5,000, this is more than $5,000, so we're moving it from the non-capital line item to the capital. The funds have already been appropriated.
Motion to approve. I have a motion on the floor, we approve the budget amendment 303. Any discussion? No discussion, everyone in favor, Sheriff sign the right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I, I know that we've had Facilities Director Wilford Smith and Kent Wild from Jackson Builders have been waiting for a long time.
Yes, sir. Can we take a quick five-minute break, though?
Yeah, but I wanted to ask, could we move them up and put them now?
Yeah.
They need to get back to work, you know?
Okay.
And they've been here a long time.
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, wow.
Was that Facilities?
That's right, now we instructed you.
We sent this resolution, but it... Was that Facilities?
Thank you.
Ouch.
Are we gonna have lunch?
Well, I'm gonna have lunch. Yes, sir. McDonald's is over.
Take that as your summary.
McDonald's is over.
It's over, of course.
Now, there's McDonald's somewhere with a Happy Meal.
It was your best, Steve.
Do you want us to call Rev. Ice?
Be nice.
Yes. We are back in session, we're gonna kind of juggle the agenda a little bit, move forward if you and the representative from Jackson Builders will go ahead and give your presentation now, please.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning. Our design-build project is moving along despite what I consider for construction to be an extremely harsh winter. Very hard to make heavy outside in the winter that we've had. They haven't let them slow it down, and this is our new front. What I want to highlight there is the natural light coming in through the...
That is amazing.
It looks like the lights are on, though.
Yeah.
But it's not. That's all natural light, and free. Okay, that's the glass wall around the computer area. And that is going to be our pickle barrel service area. It's beginning stages of it.
Pickle barrel.
I'll add here that you don't notice any ceiling tiles in place. They're waiting for power to be turned on. Once we get power turned on, we check the electrical systems, they'll start dropping the ceiling tile in, because then they can turn the air conditioning and heat on, whatever the case may be. But I'm going to let Kent, he's been patient with us all morning since we're here, and he can give you a much better idea of where they are. I will say, I'm very proud of how they've done so far and the schedule that they've managed to keep. It looks like we might even finish a little early. At this point, Kent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Milford noted, we have a little bit of challenge with the weather through this winter, but we've maintained schedule. In fact, I think we've improved on it a bit, even given that. We're about 75% finished with the exterior finishes on the building, which would be your exterior insulation and finish system, or EFAS. And the masonry product that we chose to use, which has an integral insulation system in it as well, that is all the insulation on that is applied, and there are a few, probably a couple hundred block that are left to be installed. The EFAS is complete around the front. They're removing scaffold and placing that on the Chestnut Street side, and that side should probably be finished about the end of the week. And they'll be turning the corner there to finish the rear of the building. In the rear, they're also working on the parking lot. Had a few challenges with some of the city storm drain systems. They ended up having a manhole that was just outside the parking area, just outside the turn-in for that, almost in the same location as our fire main connection, that ended up being collapsed, and they've been waiting in a concrete box, which I think they're installing this week. They're supposed to be doing it today, so that may be in progress while we're out there today. Getting that tied in and getting our roof trains tied in really kind of tie everything together on the outside. But that's coming along really well. It's our exterior work we're hoping to have finished prior to the Pickle Festival, which I think it's the 27th. Right, right? Interior work, we hung all the ceiling grids, all the interior sheet rock is complete. They may be sanding on it today when we go, but it's all hung, finished, and most of it is primed, as you could see in the pictures. All the ceiling grids are in, all the electrical fixtures are in. Pretty much everything except for the trim outs, which would be your plumbing, plumbing trim outs, the ceiling tiles, the carpet, and the cabinets. And we can't really put those in until we get power. We've been working on power with Duke Progress for about three weeks, and due to their problems with ice storms and everything else this winter, they're a little behind the eight ball. It's just, that's one of the reasons I got up and left a little earlier while working with Progress, or Duke Progress called and said that they had gotten the transformer commitment for the 10th, and that they would install it on the 11th, weather permitting. That's about 20 days better than we were told yesterday. So with that happening, we should be finished easily mid-May. So with a little bit of luck, we'll finish a little earlier than that, but I'll commit to it once we see a transformer and get power on. But I think everything's going along well, and I hope you'll have the same opinion of it when we visit there today.
Mr. Mayor, did you say May?
Yes.
What year? This year?
This year.
Man, you're going to be moved.
Well, coupled with the fact we had bad weather, and we had to take off a roof, or a roof deck that we really hadn't anticipated, which didn't make any of us happy. That really cost us about a month of actual schedule time. But we've been able to work with it, and I mean, our subs have stuck there with us. Our people have worked. We've had a lot of weeks where there wasn't a day you could work, that there was a Saturday and a Sunday they could. And I don't like people to work Saturdays and Sundays any more than anybody else. But our people have, our subs have, and they kept it on or ahead of schedule. And we're just pleased to be part of it, and I think it's going to be something we're all proud of.
Well, the, as chairman of the Facilities Committee for Wayne County, and which includes Commissioner Steve Ken and Commissioner Wayne Acott, we just want to say we appreciate the cooperation and the good job that you're doing with the Stew and War Library, along with our facilities director. I've been down there twice in the last two weeks, and you know, it's amazing. You know, what I see about the Stew and War Library is that it's going to be a tremendous addition to the downtown look of Mount Olive. It fits in perfect.
It changes things while it keeps them looking. It makes things look better.
It really makes things look better. And to be honest with you, since everything was started months ago to do this library, I have not heard anyone have any derogatory comments from the citizens of Mount Olive. Everybody's been on board, and you know what? No matter how good a job you do as a contractor, if you don't have the citizen's support, you're not doing a good job. And in this case, we have the citizen's support. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing, the quality of work I see. Those solar tees amazed me the other day. When I went in there, when you look up in those things, you need sunglasses on, they'll blind you. And the light in there is incredible. So there's some things that happen, if you remember early on when we were going through the design build process, you know, we had some people that were impatient with us, Noel. You remember that, Donna? You remember that? But yet, everything has come together, and I'm really pleased with what you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
Just a quick question, if I might, Mr. Chairman. What was your original budget completion date?
I think it was June 20th. So we're going to be...
So about a month ahead of schedule.
We're going to be a month ahead of schedule, I think.
Good.
Mr. King.
I would also like to thank you all. I write past their lot, and I see from a distance, I try not to get in the way, but I see the progress of the work going on all the time. And I appreciate y'all because you're highly professional staff. What I wanted to do was just thank our library director, Ms. Phillips, for all the hard work that she's done, and the library committee, and also the library foundation folk and citizens of the area of Mount Olive who worked hard to put that $350,000 in place so it would fall in line with what the previous county commissioner's board had obligated, or I use the word obligated, but whatever word we want to use. The end result is that all that was in place for this board to move forward, to do the X's and O's, and I appreciate that from you gentlemen, and from Milford, and all those who are currently involved. It just goes to show what a community will do when they set their minds to it. But I would also just want to add one more little bit of congratulations for the steadfast work that Ms. Phillips has done to make sure that the library stayed as a real library, because I think that's what we're getting in Mount Olive, is an absolute real library. And while I love to congratulate the adults, what I want to do is point to the fact that our children, all throughout that area, will have access to high technology. I was sharing with the group the other day at church that whatever we do not have personally in our homes, we can just walk down the street and access all the different kinds of audio. Ms. Phillips, I had an opportunity to go out to WGBR and make a public service comment, and as I read what was prepared for me, I was really proud to read that, because it spoke of what new technology is about. So for southern, for regionally southern Wayne County, because I know we're going to get a lot of folks from around the area coming in there, it's a great asset to all that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Thank you. Milford.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that we had a meeting yesterday among the staff, there's about five or six different folks, that once the, even before the facility's totally finished, will have an impact on it, and that's IT, the securities folks, Milford is far as moving some of the books and shelving in, and of course, our library director and purchasing agent in getting the shelving and the books and everything moved over there. So we are developing a schedule now. Don will have that shortly, and we'll be in a position to share that with you probably at the next meeting, so that we can set up, have a pretty good idea of exactly when we'll actually be opening it. I want to be clear, we won't be opening the middle of May. We'll be taking over the building, but there will be a little bit done. But with them being a month ahead, that's great news.
Thank you. Okay, back to the agenda. We are scheduled to go on tour of the library. We still have county managers' comments to make, the county commissioners' committee reports and comments, and we do need to go back in closed session for a little while. Lunch was mentioned. The staff has made a call. Revise in Mount Olive closes at 2:00. They're saying we need to be there by 12:30 or 1:00. So it was the pleasure of the board.
I would suggest that we hurry up with our meeting. We have one.
We got to be there at what time? We have to be there at what time?
12:30, 1:00. I don't see...
We have to leave right now.
I'm just passing on information that's been passed to me.
Okay, so we'll put a motion on the floor. What are we going to do? Come back and finish?
I mean, that's whatever pleasure the board desires. We're going to leave before we go tour.
I'd love to.
We'll have to.
Yes, you'll have to.
We'll have to, to meet the rest of them. Well, we may have some commissioners that's not going on the tour, are we? Is everybody going on the tour?
Well, we're planning to.
Yeah, free lunch. We got a hundred percent, right? Okay. That's fine.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we go into recess, go to lunch, go to tour, and come back and conclude this afternoon. I don't have anything until 5:00.
Is that just form of a motion, Mr. King?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's a suggestion, but we can...
We don't have to have a motion.
That's a suggestion.
Okay, we're going to go into recess, go to Mount Olive, have lunch, and tour the library, and come back, and we'll go back in session when we get back.